To order a work session, please rise for the pledge led by me and implicated by Mr. Triff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to you tonight and we thank you, Lord, for all the many blessings that you have blessed us with. We thank you for our city, our community, Lord, all the people that make it up. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together to discuss the business of the city. God, we pray that you bless this meeting and as matters are discussed, we pray you'd give wisdom and guidance, Lord, to all. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank y'all for being here. This is a work session. There's nothing will be voted upon tonight. This is the first quarterly work session of the year. The council expressed the desire to have a work session every quarter in the fall of last year, and this is the first one of the year. Got a fairly long agenda. We'll go through it as quickly as we can, but obviously, this is your opportunity to discuss anything that needs to be discussed, ask us questions, and we'll try to answer those, and if we can't, we'll get back with you. The first item is the retirement vesting period. Currently, our retirement plan has a 10-year vesting period, and that means if an employee doesn't stay here 10 years, he or she will not get anything. They have to do 10 years to get anything. We had some firemen leave last year. There were three of them that I spoke to, and they said to me in that meeting that one of them had been here three years, and he said, "I've got to do seven more years to get anything. So if I'm going to leave, I might as well leave now." And I've heard this issue from Joel. Joel, if you want to speak to it, please do. So the first thing we did, we went back to GMA, who holds our retirement plan, and we said, "What would this cost?" And the cost is $23,000 a year, not per employee, but total for the city, $23,000 per year. So that's a small amount of money on a $50 million budget, and we just ask that you consider this. We really think it would be a good investment, particularly for public safety, but for everyone. Faith pulled some numbers together, just polled other cities. Now, we could probably find just this many cities and counties that have 10-year vesting, but this thing isn't working. Anyway, you can see there, a lot of cities and counties already have five-year, a number of them already have 10-year. Again, we just think it's a minimal investment to keep, to retain employees. A lot of money spent training people, a lot of money spent training police and fire. And again, at about the three-year mark, you've really got a big investment in them, and so we think it's, would be to the city's advantage financially to do this, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you have on this.
What are you proposing?
Five-year, go five-year. Yes, sir.
It's $23,000 a year?
Yes, sir.
Total. What would somebody be able to draw in five years, vested five years?
Not a lot. If they were in their twenties and they did five years and then left, and they didn't draw over 65, it would not be a lot of money.
Two, three, four, five percent.
I wouldn't think it would. If they did five years, I wouldn't think it would be $100 by the time they were 65. I wish I had. Let me get you some numbers. Before you vote on it, let's give you some scenarios.
Just carry on.
Sure.
They will do that. They'll come back and give some scenarios if we show the interest.
Faith probably can comment on this, not on what I'm about to say, but after I say it, because she doesn't know what I'm about to say. But before I practice law, I used to sell employee benefits, 401K plans. I know this, I know we have more defined and not a, I mean, we have a defined contribution plan. But when I sold 401Ks, the employer portion contribution to the employee vested within three to five years. So just what the private sector was doing with the 401K plans, they have a fairly lower vesting than what they do. So I just wanted to tell everybody that's kind of what the private sector was doing.
Well, we'll get you some, you know, some numbers. We'll run some scenarios. I think it'd be interesting to see what someone, like I always think of Jimmy Bearden, who's been here over 40 years. You can see what his retirement would be. So we'll show you each end of that, and we'll do that via email. And the thing we've got to do, though, Jim is about to present some just housekeeping changes to the plan that are required by the IRS. But if we're going to change the plan, it has to be done before March 1st.
Ah, March 31st.
Oh, 30. Okay, so it's got to be done in either the February or the March meeting. So I would hope to, again, get a decision from you gentlemen by that time, because we at least need to do these housekeeping, this item two, the housekeeping updates by that time. We've got to do that to comply with the IRS.
What is our total contribution right now every year?
About a million and a half dollars.
1.5.
It's like 1.49 and change.
Out of all these cities that have, that are listed here, are they 100% employee or 100% employer contribution? Or is there a mix? Or do you guys know?
These are GMA plans only.
They're the same pension plan as we have.
So it's 100% employer?
Yes. Yes. Now, some of them do offer some matching through a 457B plan like we have as a supplement. But this five-year is their pension plan, defined benefit.
What's our match for our optional?
We don't have any. It's just employee only.
If we don't do the March 31st deadline for this, when is the next time for it to come back around?
The next year.
The next year.
We probably need a long discussion on the whole retirement plan at the retreat that will be in April, because retirement plans are extremely complicated, and they're all different from city to city and county to county and private sector, private sector. So this was just a relatively inexpensive, easy change, and it seemed to have a big impact on retaining employees.
Hey, just before we move on. Why, why now?
Oh, because the deadline was coming up.
No, no, I don't mean that. Why now? I mean, why didn't this happen 10 years ago?
I've been hearing it from Joel. I've been hearing it from Jimmy, that it's a factor in retaining public safety. Everybody's trying to hire public safety people.
So the state did a 20% increase on their troopers?
They were already five-year vested. They did that really to catch them up, because they went so many years where the troopers didn't get a raise. The GBI got it, but the troopers didn't, so they were just catching them up, which at 20% at one time was a big hit. It was a big reason for a couple of hours to leave to do that, that, take home cars, and the vesting in five years.
So it's really to look at retaining public safety?
Yeah, and that's your question, mate, is we used to do our own in-house exit interviews, and we asked Faith to start doing those. And so just to kind of get real full on why they're leaving. So the last five, I think she did for us, was that's what was mentioned. And we've been, like, we have been saying it for years, but we can tell you what they tell us, but we just said, "We'd rather you do it and us not be involved in it."
And not only public safety, but all employees that leave, that is mentioned. And so we feel like with the training costs, especially in public safety, fire, and police, that this would be a benefit. Because, you know, it's proven, if you can get five to seven years, you get your training costs back. You can recoup those. But when they're leaving in two to three, right after you've spent all that training, then you've lost them. And that's what the other cities are doing. They're recruiting certified police officers, certified firefighters. And we certify them, and they leave. So we're hoping to recoup some of that cost.
Do you really think it's going to help your retainage on a five-year?
I do with these new folks we're hiring. I mean, that's like somebody said, "They'll leave you for a new Dodge Charger," is what one chief said. One left me for a new car. The 20 cents now is not a big issue anymore, but it's take-home cars, it's who's got the biggest, shiniest gun, things like that. So, yeah, I mean, you look at Chattahoochee Hills this week announced, everybody's looking for certified officers that are off in your 30-mile radius, take-home car, your own backup gun, your own long gun, no vesting period, zero. But they want certified officers, and that's what we're looking for, is how can we go recruit? We're losing them. We can't advertise what they're advertising to get everyone to recruit. We've got our eyes on folks that, if we get some of these things fixed, that we would like to go and start recruiting them, so that we don't have to hire you when you don't know what you're doing. Basically, we send you 11 weeks to the academy, you come back another 14 weeks to learn things here. We could start strict by putting in our training program in-house.
Joel, which jurisdiction, oh, did I cut you off? Which jurisdiction is, which jurisdiction would you say, Jimmy, is Jimmy here or anybody from the fire department?
Jimmy had a medical issue tonight, so he's not here.
But out of all those jurisdictions, which jurisdiction would you say, and then maybe they're not even listed, would be the top dog in, and I don't know if the word stealing recruits is the proper term to use, but which one would you say has succeeded most at what we're talking about? And will we ever try to emulate what some of those top dogs are doing? And are we a top dog?
I think in a lot, give me an answer. I think in a lot of ways, we are. If you look at Chattahoochee Hills, we can say a lot of things that they're saying. They're saying great working environment, we can say that. Generous take-home policy 30 miles from the city limit, starting pay 39.5. We're 37.8. We can compete with that. Ample part-time jobs, $45 an hour paid through city. We get 35 an hour here, that's comparable. Brand-new Ford Explorer signed each officer, 12-hour shifts. We're doing a lot of the same things, backup gun issue, long gun issue, those are things that we incorporate in our, when we're talking about take-home cars, is that you'd have your own weapon, you don't have to come here every day, spend an hour, you know, morning, afternoon, checking our equipment in and out, swapping cars and things like that. So, yes, we would be able to do something like this and post it, just like Villarica does and a lot of these other agencies that say, "We want your certified officers." And it's really not about, again, money, but this generation, if you give them a new car and you get your own long gun, your own backup gun, you know, that's just another reason that we try to do things like this, to retain the ones that we get. We send you, we train you. It takes, you know, 11 weeks to get to the academy, another 14 weeks, six weeks from, six months from the day we say you're hired, that you're on your own on a shift, but you're as great a asset. And, you know. What's that training cost? We figured it one time, I think. I told you all that last mail, it was $24,000 that we have invested in you. Typically, we say a two-year employee is you've gone to some training, but you've got two years of experience. And in this field, there's no better experience than on-the-job training, and you know that. And so that's the timeframe, two to five years, where we're seeing them start looking. And I could say for the fire department, it's a little different market for them, because they work a 24-hour shift, so they'll drive farther. So Pop Kent took most of our, the people that left our fire department. And again, that may be an hour drive, but they can stand it, because they're not doing it during rush hour, and they're there 24 hours. They don't do it every day. They do it one day, and then they're off two. And so it's a little different market. But the reason we brought this is it's really fairly inexpensive, and it seemed to be an issue that kept coming up. It's one of the least expensive things we could do, you know, to give them something. I'm not saying $23,000 is a minor amount of money, but, you know, for the amount of employees it would impact, and compared to our total budget, it's not a big number.
Joel, this is kind of irrelevant. From the day to hire until they become post-certified or certified, what's, how long, what's their duration?
11 weeks. We wish you guys would, Ken, we swear you in as a sworn officer. We have an in-house program called our field training program, where you're assigned to a different FTO field training officer for 14 weeks. And then once we figure you're satisfied, what we do is call shadow for two weeks, which means you can go to calls, but not by yourself. Another officer will meet you there, another FTO or supervisor. Then you're on your own. Then we say you start getting advanced training, your intermediate training, your advanced training. And then, like I said, we ask you two years. Don't ask to transfer to day shift, night shift thing, or specialized, you know, like bikes or traffic or narcotics. We want two years on-street experience before you transfer to another unit. For what it's worth, benefits on six months, and you really would, I hear Joel saying, you don't put a guy loose. You don't really get anything out of him, other than that he's a warm body for the first six months. So, you know, with his benefits and, you know, we've probably got $25,000 in his time, that wouldn't count. Six months. And the two-year period where that comes into play is the state several years ago enacted a law, because it was so easy. I don't want to pick on Weisberg, but that's my hometown. But to go to a town like Weisberg, who's in desperate need of officers, "Hey, will you send me to the police academy?" Well, they'd send me to the academy, and I'd come back and go to Carrollton and say, "I'm certified." Well, now, there's a two-year, the law, that if I leave with the two years, then the agency or I have to pay them back for the training. But a lot of agencies will do that, because it's cheaper than having to go pay for the assumed academy and then have two years' experience. An agency like us would. We've actually done that before, where we've bought out their contract, because we got a good officer. And it's not something in the future that I wouldn't bring to Tim and say, "Hey, can we, can we buy this guy's contract out? Because he's, we've got a couple in mind right now that we would like to do that, that finished their academy and started taking some advanced training, become firearms instructors, things that we can benefit from." Anybody else got anything you want to say?
So this might be on our February agenda, might it?
Yes, sir. The next item is, again, what I would call housekeeping. It's IRS rule changes, and we, you've seen these, this from time to time, where we have to update our plan just to be in compliance with the IRS rules. So Jim will run through that, please.
Yeah. At the time, we had to submit the plan document for IRS review and approval to make, to ensure our tax-qualified status of our plan remains intact. Fairly lengthy process. GMA submitted the revisions to the plan on January 24, 2014. And on March 30 of last year, 2018, IRS issued a favorable advisory letter to the IRS, saying that they approved these changes. The JMEB's Board of Trustees subsequently approved these changes, and they have incorporated them into all the member cities' documents. They have sent them out and requested that each member city review and approve these recommended changes to the plan documents. There's a lot of legal terminology and whatnot in there, so I'm just going to hit the highlights on the next page, where the summary of key changes to the master plan document. The first item, the final average earnings. Basically, what we do when an employee retires for, applies for retirement, we consider the last five years, which are typically the employee's highest-earning years. And those numbers are used by GMA to compute the monthly retirement benefit due to the employee. So that's what that's in relation to. The next item, the mandatory participation opt-out. I was reading that, and I can't think of any feasible situation where somebody would want this. But if somebody, there's an employee that does not want to participate in the city retirement plan, he can make a written request to opt out and not participate in the city's retirement plan. But if that's approved and he's not participating, it's irrevocable. He cannot come back into the plan at a later date unless the city amends an adoption agreement to specifically require him or her to participate. So, anyway, that's what that's in regard to. On page one, the bottom item, immediate participation of all eligible employees. Effective January 1, 2015, eligible employees become participants in the plan on the day which they become employed. Moving on to page two, the top item, repayment of withdrawn employee contributions. Basically, what this says, if the employee makes a premature withdrawal from, I guess, his vested amount, and he wants to pay that back, he or she wants to pay that back to reclaim the service credit period that that money represents, he or she can pay that back, but it has to be with interest. And so that's what that's in relation to. In-service distribution. As a general rule, employees or elected officials may not withdraw retirement benefits while employed. That's the case here in Carrollton, so I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that. Going on down toward the bottom of the page, default death beneficiaries. If a participant who is eligible for pre-retirement death benefits dies before retirement and does not have a designated pre-retirement beneficiary, his or her surviving spouse, if any, will be considered the pre-retirement beneficiary. If there is no surviving spouse, the participant's pre-retirement death benefits will be paid in a lump sum to the participant's estate. And just general housekeeping there. The bottom of page two and on page three, those next two items just basically outline the procedures for a employee filing for disability payments with a retirement plan and filing for social security benefits at the same time. There's two scenarios. One, if an employee terminates due to disability on or after April 1, 2015. And the other one, if an employee terminates due to disability on or after July 1, 2011. Slightly different application procedures for those two scenarios. So that's what that is in relation to. The next item, employer indemnification reliance on information. Basically, what this says, we, the city, are required to or responsible for providing accurate payroll and salary information to GMA in computing benefits for retirees, which would make sense. They can only compute based on the payroll information that we give them. And so we're the ones that are ultimately responsible for that. I was telling Libby and Faith, the next one, correction of overpayments to deceased individual. This one kind of caught me off guard. I'm not sure, and we've never had this situation to my, to my knowledge. If a beneficiary dies and JMEBs makes excess payments to that person, JMEBs can go back to that deceased person's estate and recover, attempt to recover the overpayments. If they don't have luck with that, JMEBs can bill the city for the overpayment amount, and we have to reimburse the plan. I'll be honest, I'm not sure I knew that, but thankfully, I don't ever recall it happening either. So, anyway. And then likewise, the bottom on page three, correction of underpayments to deceased individuals. If the corrective payment owed to a deceased party, the corrective payment will be paid to the deceased party's surviving spouse. And if there's no surviving spouse, the benefit will be paid to the deceased party's estate. So, anyway, that's just basically the housekeeping changes to the document that GMA wants us to approve. And like Faith said, we need to have this back to them by March 31st.
So you will, you will see at least this?
Yes.
In February or March.
Are there any items on this list that are not required to keep our tax-qualified staff?
No, I think all of these are requirements per the agreement in the letter with IRS to GMA, so.
Next item is the employee salary and benefit study. As you know, we contracted with the Archer Group, the Archer Company. Mary Ann is here. Your last name, please?
Oyas.
Okay. Anyway, I won't try to pronounce that. To speak to this, I just want to say a few things before she starts. We had, it turns out, the city hired Archer in 1994 to build their compensation plan. And there are pay grades. There are 40 pay grades. They evaluate a certain job, and they assign it to one of those pay grades, and those pay grades have a pay range. And so that was done in 94. It was revised slightly in 2001, and I believe it was implemented at 90% of the market. In other words, they determined what the wage market was in the area, and they didn't want to pay that, so they paid it 90%. It has not been adjusted since then, and so that's been what, going on 18 years. The ranges themselves were bumped, about the same amount as the raises given to the employees. So there's been some adjustment, but there's not necessarily been scientific thought put into how that happened. So those ranges are now low, and she's going to address that. But what we did find is we found that there are jobs in the right pay grades, but there are about 50 that need to be evaluated. They may or may not be in the right pay grade. There are jobs that certainly jump out at me that I believe they are in a pay grade that is too high. I will give you an example. We have class-one operators, and that's a very, very seasoned water or wastewater operator with a lot of years' experience. And he has, that is the highest-ranking licensed category. Robert is one. He's sitting back here on the back row. Very talented fellow. They are pay grade 20. The lab job is also a pay grade 20. Now, occasionally, we run that job with someone who has a class-one license, and that's fine. But occasionally, we run it with someone who's new, and I believe they can get that license in six months.
If you go for the lab and.
Lab only. So somehow, this six-month person got in the same pay grade as this six- or seven-year person. So that's the kind of thing that we need to look at. So the recommendations in here for public safety, we believe are accurate. The recommendations for construction-type jobs, we believe are accurate. Some of the other jobs, we need to have Mary Ann take a closer look at and reevaluate and re-categorize those jobs. Some may be high, some may be low, but that would just be the next phase of this, and we hope to have that done by the April retreat. With that said, your floor.
Okay, thanks. Good evening. So the report in front of you is a report of, that describes in a lot of detail the study or the update to your current pay plan that the Archer Company has just completed. So obviously, we're not going to go into this in detail, but I do want to hit some of the highlights, and Tim's already hit some of the highlights. So, you know, again, the city, I think, did the right thing in 1994 by saying, "We're going to establish kind of a state-of-the-art pay plan for a public-sector employer." And at that time, what they said is, "We're going to pay competitively in the market." So they looked at pay rates of similar jobs in cities and counties around here. But we're also going to establish a hierarchy of jobs from highest-paid to lowest-paid. And the hierarchy or the grades are going to be based on elements of what we call job worth. So knowledge, skills, abilities, education, experience, decision-making, independence, all those things that reasonable people would probably agree should impact a person's pay. So that was great. And then in 2001, there was an update done, and as Tim mentioned, for whatever reason, and then. And as Tim mentioned, for, for whatever reason, and this happens quite frequently, one of our public sector clients will say, we'd like to pay at 100% of market, kind of at the market average, but it's expensive to do that. And there may be things going on in the city or county, what have you, where that's too expensive. So some of you were probably on the council then or know why the city made a choice to pay at 90% of the market then. So now, again, fast forwarding to 2018, we were asked to come in and really do three things. One was to complete a new market analysis. Then, and I'll talk about these in a little more detail. Then, there were about nine or 10 positions that needed to be graded using the grading system. The city adopted it with us many years ago, and we did that. And then the third most significant part was to say, now, what should the pay ranges look like in 2018, 19? So that's sort of what the scope of work was done. And again, it's described in a lot of detail here. In case you are interested, on page three is a list of the organizations. That Chip, who was the consultant on the project before he passed away a few months ago. This, the list of cities and a few of the counties that were determined to be your labor market. Now, what do we mean by that? We essentially mean organizations that have similar jobs, that have similar organi-, you know, organizations, organizations that are within a commuting distance. So we kind of look at, you know, what, what does a reasonable person commute? They commute longer than they used to, we know that. And there was an emphasis that was made basically along the western, you know, northwest and southwest area in reference to Atlanta. Cobb County was added and a composite of data from local metro Atlanta. This is described in detail here, but basically, what the report's saying is that it would be inappropriate to compare your wages directly or salaries to metro Atlanta, but you're close enough and metro Atlanta has an influence on salaries in this part of the state. So some credence was given to the metro Atlanta area. We get very specific in the report defining how those decisions were made. Then, we chose a large group of positions that we could actually benchmark. And what that means is these are jobs that are pretty typical in the comparable organizations. We're going to find them. They represent high, medium, and low-paid jobs. We take jobs from different departments. A city organization is very wide in what it does. And based on those criteria, we did an extensive salary survey. We brought in some pub-, excuse me, private sector data. But every city, every client of ours has some nuances. One of the nuances here is that for certain positions, manager, engineer, a couple of others, the city has recruited and competes with private sector engineering and construction firms. So that's an example where we, we actually brought in and took a look at that data as well. That's also described in the report. The results of the analysis, kind of at a high level, when we went out and looked at current market rates. The results are described sort of starting on page four, but the main results are the top of page five. So it's not surprising that if the city set its pay ranges at about 10% below market in 2001, that now in 2018, the ranges have slipped. I think the reason, so what we find is that on average, your ranges are about 84, 85% of market. In other words, you know, 15% or more, 15% less than the average pay in the market. What's happening, and it's described in here quite a bit, is there was a number of years of quite stagnant wage growth in the country and in the southeast public sector. Early 2000s, the recession, the Great Recession, and so on. Now, in the past few years, probably five years in southeast US, definitely in Atlanta metro and beyond, public sector wages are moving up at a faster rate than they were for many years. The actual salaries are moving up faster and the ranges are moving up faster following these many years of sta-, kind of stagnant growth. So because of that, I think what's happened is the city's ranges have slipped back. None of this is unusual, immoral, fattening, or anything. This is what happens over time when a city or a county or what have you only looks at what the market is paying in a real meaningful way every 10 years or so. And one of the recommendations we make in here is that rather than coming, coming in and doing a major review, kind of a big swath review every 10 years, it's probably in the city's interest to consider smaller adjustments to the ranges every year, two or three at the most. That me-, that, that will make the expenses more predictable. It will keep the ranges up with the market in a more meaningful way and avoid, as I said, sort of these large studies that can be kind of costly to implement. Okay, so I'm jumping ahead. So just in terms of the, the market data, we found, you know, most of the benchmark jobs that we looked at were paid below market with a few exceptions. And really, about a third of the jobs that we looked at, the ranges are 10% or more below market. So there, you know, there's clearly a difference between the, the general pay ranges here in the market. Yes?
The, when you're considering pay ranges, are you looking at the, when, with these percentages here? Are you talking about the minimum, median, maximum, what part of it?
Sure.
Could you describe that?
So in the city's pay ranges, and it's true of most of the comparables, there is, as you said, in the range, there's a minimum or kind of a hiring rate, a midpoint and a maximum. We compared your midpoints to market midpoints. And we know because we did the original study and the update that the way your plan is structured, it's the midpoint rate that is tying into the market. So when, in 2001, they set up the midpoints, they brought those down 10% from the average market. And they built that structure at 90%. So to answer your question, we were looking at predominantly midpoints. Okay.
And you may have pointed this, and I missed it, but when you say the market, is that total market or is that public market, private market sector?
Yeah, well, I, I did, but I'll just, I'll just reiterate. It's on the bottom of page three. This actually gives you the cities and counties that we looked at, as well as bringing in some private sector data from engineering and construction firms for your engineering-related jobs.
Is it the total market?
Yeah.
Public and private?
Public and private. More emphasis on public because, you know, a fair number of the jobs here don't exist in kind in the private sector, but there are some that do, obviously.
And are the rates adjusted for cost of living adjustments based on those sort of cities or no?
No. So in defining what cities and particular counties are comparable, we look at, you know, demographics, commuting distance, population, counties and cities that has reported us that you've lost people to in the past or you hire from. But it's likely that one or more of these cities or counties is wealthy or, or less wealthy within a certain range. I'm sure, having worked with Chip on, on and off for 30 years, I know that he would have done that due diligence and would not have stacked the market to say organizations that are much wealthier or much less, much poorer than you. Good question. All right, okay. So just as, just as a nod to remember, and I won't go into detail. On page six and seven, we, we just remind the city that, and I think, you know, Tim was alluding to this before. We talk about pay ranges, but it's really important to think about jobs being in pay grades. The way that they get in the grades under the city's compensation system is through this point factor evaluation system that Archer Company uses and has been using for about 50 years in the public sector around the US. So when we talk about a job being in a grade 10 or 11 or 22 or 40, and you look at the factors on page six and seven, just as a reminder, these are what we look at to grade jobs. And as you look at these factors, like dealing with people and equipment, math, reasoning, education experience, they're universal, they apply to all jobs. And having used the system for most of my adult life in HR now, I've never found a job that this isn't valid for. It's just simply a fair system, and it's been tested in many places across the US. Now, in the current study, we really weren't asked to come in and look at the pay grades of most of the jobs except for about nine. And as Tim said, this, you know, there's a belief that some of the jobs that were graded years ago maybe need, or probably need to be reviewed again. So keeping that in mind, that wasn't the focus of this current study, but it certainly can and should be done. Now, once the market analysis was done, we went ahead and updated the grade structure. And that's described in a lot of detail in eight, nine, and 10. I'll just have you look at page nine really quickly. There's a table on there called Relationship Between Job Evaluation Points and Market Pay. This is, this is basically just saying that the recommended pay ranges that we are recommending to you are based on a statistical process where we integrate the job evaluation points with the market pay for each of these jobs that we benchmarked. And if you look at the graph there, you see job evaluation points on the bottom, market midpoints to the left on what's called the Y-axis. Each one of those points is one of the jobs we benchmarked in the market. And you can see as points go up, so does the market pay. What that's really saying is that using this point factor system is a very fair way to pay jobs, and the points actually really predict what the market pays. What that's saying, what that really is saying is that the compensation philosophy the city adopted in 1994 and continues to use is fair both internally in looking at job worth and also at the market. It's just, it's a solid, it's a solid system. It continues to work. So in our view, in the long and short of it, there was really a couple of, of issues. One was, you know, the market has grown quickly relative to years past, and the city faces itself with pay ranges that in general are quite low. Our thought about market competitive competitiveness is that pay ranges should be somewhere within ideally 95% of market to, you know, anything over 100 that you would choose to pay. You know, our public sector clients, which are most of our clients, 1% or 2% ever adopt a structure that's significantly higher than market. It rarely happens. Most of our clients will try to pay somewhere within 95% of market to 100, 102, somewhere in there. So as we updated the structure for 2019, we're recommending a structure which we would say is at market or on average about 100% of market.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Are you looking at salary only in comparison? Or are you looking at benefits as well in terms of looking at that market?
Yeah, so the, the study was limited to base salaries, didn't look at benefits. I can, I can tell you something about that, and this is my opinion because we do a lot of benefits comparisons. I don't, I'm not saying it's not a good idea to look at benefits because I think it is. Typically, what most of our clients do is they take, if we were to do a benefits comparison, they'll take that data and then they'll look at their benefits plan and make changes. It's unusual that our clients will say, for example, the benefits are so rich here that we're going to keep our pay lower than market. It doesn't happen that much. But I am a believer in total compensation, and I think as an employer, it's good to look at your benefit expenses and the value to the, to the employees.
And if I can just pause you just a second. We do have some data, that's what's on the screen, but this, this two-page color chart that you have compares our health care to the employee contribution, that sort of thing. So that will give you some data there, and we can try, we can try to, to look at that as a part of this.
That represents all of the cities and counties that were compared in the salary study. So, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What page 10 and 11 is basically saying is that we are not recommending any changes to the pay structure itself. In terms of, right now, you have 40 pay grades. That's a good amount of grades to allow you to pay differently for jobs at different skills. There has been a tendency in the private sector for companies to have fewer pay grades and very wide pay ranges. That hasn't really sold itself in the public sector as much. Probably doesn't work as well for a number of reasons. So from the Archer Company's perspective, the structure itself is sound. It was just a matter of bringing the rates up to more competitive levels, and that's described in here. So if you look at page 12, this is the actual recommended salary ranges for 2019, bringing the city, you know, close to market and at-market schedule. I'll just refer you to the last exhibit so you know it's there. On the la-, it's, it's hard, it's hard on my old eyes to read, and I apologize. But basically, what that last exhibit does for each of your pay grades is it compares the current ranges to the recommended ranges and then shows you how much the ranges are changing. What you.
Oh, you're on page 11?
I'm on page 12, and then I was just referring you to the exhibit on the very last page of the report. What you will see in terms of our recommended ranges as compared to the current ranges, the low to mid grades, the ranges that you have now are closer to the market than the higher grades. So for whatever reason, over time, the pay for your sort of professional managerial executive jobs has fallen behind the market at a much more significant rate than your technical, paraprofessional skilled labor jobs. That's wasn't, I'm sure that didn't occur by design, that's just how it happened. As cities or counties get out of date with the market or out of whack, I should say, sometimes some groups have done better than others vis-à-vis the market. It's usually just random. In this situation, though, it's pretty clear that for the professional managerial executive jobs, you're farther behind the market. Okay? Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Well, let me just stop and say, I did not know you were going to say that, and I did not get that out of this report. I will tell you, my desire is to take care of those folks on the lower end. And I want to tell a story of a conversation we had over the telephone one day. But, you know, again, the jobs we have trouble keeping filled are public safety and construction-related. And I said to, to Mary Ann, I said, can't we implement this for those folks? And I think this report even says that for those folks, if we implement what she recommends, the total cost of the city would be $70,000. So I know that's a number, you want to hear, you want to know, what is this going to cost you? So we take care of public safety, we take care of the construction people, it's 70,000. We've got all those other jobs that need to be evaluated. And she pointed out to me that it is dangerous to cherry pick out of this because you may inadvertently target groups of people. And that's something we have to be careful of today. So what we're recommending is that we don't change anything until the next budget year and that we don't do that until these evaluations are done. And we'll make sure everybody's in the right grade. And then we would come to you and say, this, this program will cost, and I'm going to make up a number. Let's say it's $150,000. And if you say, I don't want to pay that, I'm willing to pay 100, then we would implement it at whatever percentage that is. And it may not be 100% market, it may then be 98 or 7 or 6 or whatever, so.
Or phase it in over a course.
Or phase, exactly. So just to know that was, was my intent to do here. Because again, the, the struggle's been keeping, and had a hard time keeping Joel and Erica. I've had a hard time keeping the construction folks. And I'm not saying y'all aren't worth more money, but the goal here was to take care of the construction folks and the, and the police officers that are being wooed away. So I just, I want to be real clear in that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I think what.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
How are we grading? I keep hearing the word grade, and I'm looking at you, grade from 4 to 40. How are we grading?
Well, they're supposed to do it. What has happened is over the last probably 25 years, you know, we might have a new position, where's Chris? We didn't have a deputy chief before. And we looked at it and went, well, he ought to make more than these folks, less than that. And we just stuck him in a grade. But they need to evaluate the grade. Because the grade we stuck him in, he's one of those that would be red circled. I know that makes you happy because you, you would be too high for your new grade, and he would never get a raise again, and we don't want that to happen. And I don't believe that's fair to Chris, but I'm, Chris is somebody I can say that to. So we want him, we want his job evaluated so that we got him in the right grade. And that's something they do using this point scale she was talking about.
Okay, so we're going to get that information?
Yes, sir. We hope to get it to you by April. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and how they do it, what they do is, on every position, we send Archer Company, or the Archer Group, a job description. And we update those. Right now, we've started updating those consistently because job descriptions change. People add, add duties, subtract duties, whatever, and they grade it.
People add duties, subtract duties, whatever, and they grade it based on that job description. They look at the market and assess those points, if I'm correct, you know, based on the, the work value, the, the responsibilities, the time. And they're, they're the ones who come back and say, "Okay, this job is a, is a grade twelve." And we look at the minimum, maximum, and mid-range.
Okay, so that's the information we're still going to get.
Yes. Yes, and more accurately.
I was just having a hard time figuring, finding where the glossary was for the grade.
Right, right. Like, we don't make it up. It, it comes true.
But the problem is, is, is we probably did and not paid and not anybody, but, you know, nobody, probably some of it was made up, but not meant to be. Again, they might hire a widget maker, and they said, "Well, widget makers between this kind of mechanic and this kind of electrician, they stick it in there." Well, should it pay Archer to evaluate the job? It's not a huge number, is it? A hundred bucks maybe, or something? Libby, you remember what it was when we'd have a job, a hundred dollars. So, you know, that's, that's worth doing to keep your scale clean and to keep you in a defensible position.
Yeah, we, we evaluate, I think last year, eight thousand jobs across the U.S., mostly in the southeast. So we do so much of it, we, you know, we can keep our skills up. We can train your staff to do it, but they probably would do enough of it that they would, you know, be able to keep their skills up. And also, it's harder to be objective when you work with people. We can be objective, we don't know anybody here, you know, very well, you know, a couple of you. So that, that's kind of the methodology. So I, I think Tim hit the high points of kind of our initial implementation recommendations. Whenever we do an update like this, we're kind of simple-minded in this respect. We say, "If the pay ranges for the jobs are here, what we would recommend is if there's anyone who's not at that minimum rate, try to bring them to minimum." Now, there's a number of jobs that the city wants us to evaluate, so we can't say with certainty how many jobs are below minimum and what that cost would be for a few more weeks until we finish the grading process. There's twelve employees that right now are paid higher than what we would recommend for a maximum rate. Not their fault they got there. It comes back to, every client has to make a decision about how high they want their higher end of their ranges to be. Every job is worth only so much, you know, including mine and yours. So once you make that decision as an employer, if we find employees that are paid above that, we're going to regrade those jobs. There may be jobs that are, should be higher graded. If there's a couple jobs left that are above that maximum, what we recommend is that just keep their pay static for a couple of years until their ranges catch up. If you continue to give those folks base pay increases, it just kind of exacerbates a problem. But often, jobs like this are, are undergraded, and we'll find out. So that's sort of the implementation recommendations, it's all described in more detail here. And then in the future, I mean, we're impressed that you have kept a solid pay plan in place really well for all these years. We would just recommend a couple of changes in the future, and I mentioned them before. Rather than doing these larger reviews every ten years, if the city can consider a small adjustment to the ranges in the neighborhood of one, one and a half percent every year, every other year, it's cheaper in the long run and it keeps you current with the market. Continue as jobs are created or changed to have them graded so that you keep the integrity of, you know, the kind of internal ranking, and then continue to do your across-the-board increases as you have been.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
Tim, you may, and I do this, I was talking to the mayor, but you told me that's what they do, their ranges adjust every year, one percent, one and a half. Are you familiar with that?
Oh, I think it actually was done here for years, Libby did for years. We haven't done it the last couple of years because, just for a variety of reasons. But, uh, something you had recommended is that we have the consultant take a look every three or four years so that we don't get ourselves in this situation again, and that's something we'd like to do also. But, um, there, there were, most of the years, I would say, over the last fifteen, when did you come here?
I did.
Since she, since Libby came, we, the ranges were, ranges were adjusted the same amount of the raise given, the raise that was, average raise given. So you'd look, and some of it would be a percent half, sometimes it'd be three percent. Did you only move the bottom, or did you move the whole range? Okay, so. But we're still about, if you, in this report, it'll say we're still about one point six percent behind overall.
And, you know, that's, that's kind of an important point to emphasize, is that I talked about the ranges being, you know, on average fifteen percent below market. Those are the ranges. But when you look at people's actual pay, their actual salaries, what they're taking home, in general, their rates are much closer to market, uh, in the nineties on, on average. So there's a difference between when you look at ranges and actual pay rates. So there's a lot of things that are going well here, and you've done right, and I just, you know, want to commend you for doing it. These kind of adjustments, though, when you come in every ten years and do it, there's generally some sort of price tag as salaries are moving up, as the economy has improved, and so forth. And I just, I just wanted to say as an aside, what the police chief was, I think you're the police chief, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Was talking about in terms of public safety, recruitment, and retention, we work with many counties and cities, many, in the, in this greater area, and we're hearing the same thing. I hope it's not this city, but one of the cities apparently has billboards where they're trying to get, um, you know, certified officers. So I can just validate everything he's saying. Absolutely, the market is very hot for certified officers, it's, it's a real issue. So, any other questions?
Uh, you talked about actual rate versus ranges on what, on, on these grades, where are you seeing more of the actual rate being closer to that upper nineties? Is it, does it vary?
Yeah, it varies, it, it varies. And, and that detail, um, has, has been presented to the city. It's always a question how much detail to put in these reports.
What we didn't want is a report floating around with everybody's pay. And I realize it's public record, and somebody could ask for it, but, but just to lay it out just didn't seem like a wise thing to do. With everybody's name and their actual salary, it didn't seem like the right way to do business, so.
But you did say we had about twelve jobs that were overpaying?
I, you know, I would ne, I would not say that. I wouldn't say they're overpaid. I would say that, um, their salaries are higher than the maximum we're recommending following the structure of your pay plan. The structure of your pay plan is that your maximums top out at about seventeen or eighteen percent above market. So, and that's fairly typical for public sector. So for whatever reason, these folks are paid a little higher than that.
And what I think we're going to find out of the twelve is that most of them, some of them are just plain overpaid for the job they're doing because they were moved from a higher-paying job to a lower-paying job, and their pay was never cut, okay? But I think you're going to find that most of them, and again, I'm going to pick on Chris, and he's probably going to have nightmares tonight because this came up. But we made Chris the deputy chief. We looked at where, who we fell between, and we picked a number, and I did it myself. And then we put him in a pay grade. There was no science behind which pay grade. Now, when she looks at that grade, she said, "That grade should only pay this," and Chris makes more than that grade. So he, when she evaluates the job, I predict that he will be in a higher grade, and he would no longer be one of those, you know, that shows that results. And again, I'm sorry, Chris, to pick on you, but it, it happens with the jobs where there's only one of those people in the city. It doesn't happen with the job where there's fifteen of those folks. It happens with those, those rare jobs where there's only one of those folks.
So can we legally, I mean, will we legally cut people's pay if we find that they're in the wrong?
No, what we would do is just, it's called red circling. We'd say, "Well, they won't get any more raises till the pay scale catches up with them."
Not even thoughtful, though.
Right.
Right.
You're saying pay scale, you're, you're meaning range?
The range, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But again, those jobs are twelve that we're going to reevaluate.
And there may not be any, I, I know of one that is the case, because it was a gentleman that couldn't function in a job he was in. It was when I first came here, I was not city manager, we were cleaning up utilities, and we moved the gentleman from a higher-paying job to a lower-paying job and did not cut his pay. You, you're not going to see a lot of that. I think when she evaluates the jobs, you're going to see most of that issue go away.
You guys work mainly with public sector doing this?
Yeah, about ninety-five percent of our clients are public.
And the report you have that it was, uh, there's some management positions maybe, um, pulled from construction management areas. Do you see that in similar other, like in other cities where you've done this? Do you also see management recommending that you look at those other sectors to compare those salaries?
Yes, yeah. In fact, we're working with a, a major utility in the Atlanta area right now. I just shouldn't mention their name without asking them, but it's the same thing, you know, for their, their engineers, the utility top directors, they're saying, "We hire from engineering firms, we hire from construction management firms. We need to see what they're paying." It's, you know, it's interesting, when we looked at the, that data and we compared it to other cities, we didn't see that the engineering construction firms were paying a lot more. You know, when I started this business thirty years ago, there was a bigger difference. City top jobs compared to private sector, cities were much lower. It's, it's done this over the years.
I want to point out one other thing we did with the health insurance this past year. We had budgeted a certain amount, I believe it was seven percent for health insurance increase. The lowest we were able to get that number down, was it nine-one or nine?
Nine.
It was nine. We applied that other two percent to the employees. So if you look at the green box on the screen where it says employee only, that, that was zero last, in 2018, and we raised it to twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. So my philosophy, and I'm going to do what you gentlemen tell me to do, but my philosophy would be to pay people better, but let them pay a little more for their benefits, because that's what our competitors are doing. And we didn't get a single phone call complaining about doing that. So, um, you'll notice our competitors, the employee pays a bigger contribution of his health insurance. So, you know, as we run into that issue, we, we will, you know, my intent was to let that number creep up. It's not going to get where it impacts whether we, someone would come here or not, but it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be zero. It needs to be, it needs to match the market.
And we don't, uh, put any additional cost for anybody that smoked tobacco or anything like that?
That is coming this year.
Okay, good.
We, the insurance people recommended that we not make too many changes at once, but that, and, and this is something I like to say, we need to do it on weight also, and then I'll finally lose weight, because if you hit my wallet, I'll, I'll do something. But, uh, it is, Tommy isn't here tonight, Tommy dips. It is not cruel if we make Tommy stop dipping snuff. It's actually good for him. It is not cruel if you make me lose weight, it's actually good for me. So those are not, that's not a mean thing to do, it's a good thing to do. And so we, that's, we're headed that way rapidly.
So this year, we're at twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents per employee contribution out of their paycheck going to the health care.
Well, it's only if they're employee only, and I can't read that from here, but if they're employee and spouse, what does that say?
Twenty-one sixty-seven. Or employee and spouse is one sixty-four.
Yeah, that's right. Employee and child is one fifty-six, total family is two thirty-four.
Employee only is ten dollars a pay period, so we have twenty-six pay periods, and it equals out to twenty-one sixty-seven a month.
But you're going to see that-
Go up.
Go up, yes, sir. I got one of those in here somewhere, laid. Oh, thank you, you're doing that.
So tobacco and, uh, obesity may be two of those factors that we consider in what we're talking about. Are there other factors, like vaping? Are we even going to get that detailed?
That's classified as tobacco use.
It is.
That falls under tobacco?
It does.
Don't see, I don't even know what.
It does now, with the new studies, they've, they've classified vaping under tobacco use.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got smokeless, the actual cigarettes, and vaping.
And what about, do we do any, like, random drug testing?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Are you fired if you're on drugs?
Yes.
Is that how they go? Okay.
Yes.
What if it's a prescription drug?
We're a drug-free workplace, that, then, that's acceptable.
But it has to come from a doctor?
Yes.
If I'm on some crazy prescription drug, yeah.
With your name on it.
Not me, but I'm saying like-
I can't write you a prescription.
Right.
And also-
I mean, we're laughing about that, y'all know that's a problem.
When you're tested, you write down, you, you say, "Well, I'm taking this, I'm taking this, I'm taking this." You show the prescription so they know that's from the doctor.
Okay, so if you find a trace of something crazy in there, then that person's fired? Or we get them?
It goes to the medical review officer, and they do retesting of it. The medical review officer contacts the employee to justify any means that he could be doing. And once it's not, then they are terminated. They have a chance to go to, um, substance abuse program and return to retest in six months and reapply again. But they are terminated because we're a drug-free workplace. Now, on our DOT required employees, they cannot take prescription drugs that inhibit their ability to drive, and they know that, so that-
I'm sorry.
That would disqualify them.
So if they, just a little bit off subject, if, if they do take a prescription drug that prohibits them to drive, are they put out an office job or a desk job temporarily, or how, what do we do with those employees?
Yes, if they come to us and say, "I've got this problem, and I have to take this where I cannot drive," if we can make, um, you know, adjustments to their job position, at that time, we will. If not, they have to wait till they get cleared one hundred percent to come back.
That's just open market.
The safety, yes.
Okay, the next item is, uh, Police Department Personal Patrol Vehicle Program. Joel and Jim are going to present this, I just wanted to just kind of talk in generalities about it. It seemed, part of the benefits of policing, we want to be able to take their own car home. Walt and I have talked about this, cars last longer. I think you said you assign one individual to a truck, and the truck lasts longer when you do that. So the, the, what we're hearing, and Joel will speak to this more, is that if it's an assigned vehicle, and we let them drive it home, we would limit, uh, the area they can go to. They wouldn't be able to drive it fifty miles, I believe you're talking about thirty, whatever will work, you'll look at that. Uh, they can't-
Okay.
Take the wife to the grocery store in it, or the husband to the grocery store in it. It's not to go on vacation in, it's to drive back and forth to work. But, uh, the vehicles will last longer, we'll get more miles out of them. We have found a, a lease program, which is actually a purchase program, at three-point-one percent. Uh, and so this would cost the city a little, it won't be as much as you would think. But again, Joel's going to talk about the benefits, and Jim's going to talk about the cost, so.
Yeah, how's IRS going to, uh, pardon? How's IRS going to look at all the benefits side? How you going to judge that?
We have to give them a, uh-
The same way they do it now, we have the twenty-five take home, because it's an emergency vehicle, it's not counted for.
If it's marked and decal, emergency, it's, they don't, it's, it's, yeah.
Joel, I'm going to say, I really appreciate your font size and your, uh, love this, my old age.
Thank you. I'd like to tell you what we're proposing is a patrol vehicle program assigned to individual officers. Right now, we have about twenty-five between detectives, administration, and K-9 that take their vehicles home. Um, I'll give you an example, I've had my vehicle assigned to me for fourteen years, the same car, drive it every day, uh, very low maintenance, excellent condition because I keep it serviced, and it's got eighty-seven thousand miles on it. So, um, we're proposing, uh, we would have to purchase twenty-one vehicles that would be fully equipped, um, in order to do this. That would give us about three spare cars, I believe, is that right, Chris? Backups for, if you have one in the shop or going down for whatever reason.
But to be clear, the new one wouldn't be the backup?
It will not. We'll have, we'll, in our existing vehicles, we have, uh, enough vehicles now that we don't need about twenty-one. But yes, the backups will be our older, older cars when the most mileage. And I'll talk about that as we get to it. The next page shows, just, we compared to a lot of other agencies, um, that are actually out right now actively recruiting. I didn't put Chattahoochee Hills, because we sat down Tuesday night, Chris and I didn't work on this, went home that night, and Chattahoochee Hills posted on social media, their Facebook website, this big long list of what they'll do for, we want certified officers, and they're willing to do all these things for you. Smyrna P.D. last year offered a five-thousand-dollar sign-on bonus if you're certified, five-year vested, if you sign a five-year contract, another five thousand, take-home vehicle, same thing exists as your own guns, and I think you actually got a chance to talk to their H.R., and they just got tired of training these officers and losing them to Cobb, Marietta, Powder Springs, some of these other agencies that were offering these benefits. So we just chose some around, that's Carroll County S.O., you know, I've talked to Sheriff So, we just showed some around, that's Carroll County S.O., you know, I've talked to Sheriff Langley, he's been doing it the longest of anybody I've talked to. My brother's been there thirty-one years, he's had an assigned vehicle for thirty-one years. So, it works. Sheriff said they get between eight and ten years out of a car, and I'm talking about that, how we're gonna do that. But just some of the ones we looked at, Carroll County S.O., Villarica P.D., Douglasville, Noonan, McGrane's, Rome, Peachtree City, Temple, Franklin. And the list goes on and on, we just threw a map up, just to kind of show you what it looks like from an aerial view. Next page talks about maintenance. There's plenty of studies show, but actual proof in the pudding is, you know, the sheriff says that it's, it's, it's reduced wear and tear on the car, which makes sense. The equipment we have in there, each car has a laptop in there, dash cam, a printer, everything, that's basically the officer's office for twelve hours. You do everything inside that vehicle, print citations, you print your forms that you have to serve on people. All of that would be cut in half, the wear and tear on it. I think the next, we, we currently don't auction vehicles, we did put that at the bottom, that by the time we get, take a vehicle off the road, nobody wants it. So, we use it for training, or the fire department takes it and practices with the jaws of life on it. These, I believe, at a ten-year car, assigned to one person, they'll have some value left to it, that we would be able to go to auction with them, like the city does with other vehicles. Next page is an email that I got from Chief Meadows, Buster's the chief in Noonan, he's been there forty years anyway. They went to it two years ago, they have ninety-one officers. He said, quite frankly, Joel, I got tired of losing them to Sheriff Jaeger, who two years ago offered forty thousand for certified officers. They had a take-home program, car program for years, so he lost a lot of officers to them. The city of Noonan went out and bought the cars all at once, we're not proposing that, and we'll show you why. This came from his fleet manager, he says, you know, we've seen positive changes, the biggest one is, vehicles that were hot-seated before, like we do, I jump in, you jump in, I jump out, you jump in, is, the officers, it's placed solely on them, their responsibility to have your car maintained. And if a car shows up at the shop, and the transmission's out, or if the, if there's a dent in it, it's not, well, Rory did it, I didn't do it, there's four of you that you can blame it on. Or if I, and one of the things he says is minor problems not turning into major, because if I hear something clicking in the motor, I might say, well, Jim, well, he's the guy driving next, I'll let him ride it up, and you must say, well, we'll let Rory do it tomorrow, before you know it, the motor's blown, or something like that. So, that's what he's noticed a lot of, that, again, after two years. Next one talks about the lifespan of the vehicle. We're currently operating these cars hot-seated. We're getting about four, this is pushing it used to, it was three years. We went to higher mileage as a charge request, so we're getting about four to five years out of a car. What we don't want is a car on the road with a hu, not just a hundred twenty thousand miles, but you gotta think a hundred twenty thousand city miles that never gets a break. So, four to five years is what we're getting right now. I've talked to Sheriff Langley, who says they get eight to ten years out of a car, easily. Sheriff, I mean, Chief Meadows said the same thing, that's what Sheriff Jaeger told them. They've, again, been doing it two years, but that was their sale to the mayor council, is that we'll, we'll get eight to ten years out of these cars. I mean, I'll give you an example, I don't drive on patrol, but I've driven it every day for fourteen years, and I've got eighty-seven thousand miles on it. And it's in great shape. I know they make fun of my car, but it is in great shape. I love it. Under this program, what would happen is, like, the way the sheriff does, about seven years, five to six, five to seven years, he'll take the car off patrol, because it's got about a hundred twenty to a hundred forty thousand miles on it. We don't want to take the chance, we're in route to your house being burglarized, and our transmission fall out, or our car break down. So, we'll do what typically they do, is take it off the street and give it to a non, not emergency person. Maybe our school resource officers, our bike officers, create, I mean, somebody in admin, a detective. So, it doesn't just totally come off the road and go straight to the junkyard like we do now, because it's worn out. There's still life to the vehicle, but we'll put our newer ones on the street that are responding to calls for service. We found that study, I mean, that's just, the study showed that thirty vehicles come from Washington, they had a company, they had to come do thirty take-home vehicles, thirty-four unassigned, for eight years. Study showed that the ones that shared a vehicle lasted about twenty to twenty-six months, the ones that were assigned to an individual, they lasted sixty months. The average maintenance was eighty-four hundred a year versus thirteen seventy-five. Again, it is, it's an increased morale for employees, it's a, it's one of the things that we like to, to use for retention of the good employees that we train. The next page is the course of numbers. Currently, we buy about, we buy five cars a year, and because we're, we no longer have the Crown Vic, the equipment making them, we stopped using the Tahoe, because they basically outpriced themselves, thirty-four base, we can get a Charger twenty-four, it's a no-brainer. With the equipment, which I was showing the last page, none of it swapped over to a Charger. So, fully equipped is, we're paying about two hundred seventeen seventy a year for that. Under the proposed lease, it's a, it's a company that Jim, he'll talk more numbers than I know, but there's options you choose. The six-year is a three point one six-three rate, a hundred sixty-seven, a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. And then the next page is great to me, do you want to go ahead and talk about that, Jim?
Sure. Purchasing or leasing these cars?
Now, you, it is a purchase, they call a lease, you actually own the vehicle.
Vehicle's titled to us, and there's no dollar buyout at the end of the lease, so it's basically.
They deliver, it belongs to the city of Carroll.
Yeah.
After a six-year lease.
A lot of cities are doing this, because they couldn't go out and buy twenty or thirty vehicles at one time. And I don't know mon, numbers, but he says this is actually the best numbers we could get. And then he sat down and did this spreadsheet for us today, the next page, maybe that Mr. Triplet did, to kind of explain debt service and all that stuff.
I think the best way, when I was looking at putting this together, is to look at, you know, we budget on a cash basis. And when we buy, Joel, as he said, he buys five police cars a year, under his current procurement policy and his needs. If you look up at the left-hand side of the current program, five cars annually, forty-three, five fifty-one each, two seventeen, seven fifty-five gross purchase price. These are financed through the GMA lease pool. It's a floating rate, but they tell us to use four point seven six percent for budgeting purposes. So, Joel, when he has five cars purchased and finances over three years, he can pretty much, year in, year out, budget seventy-six thousand dollars annually in debt service payments for his police cars. And so, if you'll look, based on the current program, if nothing changed, for the ten-year period of time that we're looking at, he would have a seventy-six thousand dollar debt service payment every year, because he's gonna be buying five cars every year on the three, three-year amortization schedule. Now, look to the right-hand side of the, the screen. Proposed program that we're looking at right now, twenty-one cars, same unit price, forty-three, five fifty-one. One-time purchase, that is a gross purchase price of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, five seventy-one, at a rate of three point one six-three percent. The annual debt service on that, per the vendor, of one sixty, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. It would be amortized over a six-year period, and we're assuming the car would have a ten-year life. So, if you look at the second horizontal column, you're gonna have proposed a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in debt service for the first six years. But years seven, eight, nine, and ten, based on this, this purchase that we're looking at here, you wouldn't have any more payments on this proposed lease that we're looking at. So, the first six years, you're gonna have an increase in debt service cost of ninety-two thousand dollars. The truth is, initially, it's gonna cost us more money, because we're buying more vehicles. But years seven, eight, nine, ten, that debt service is gonna decrease. And so, basically, the way the numbers net out on this scenario, that we would have a increased debt service cost over the ten-year period of two hundred and forty-eight thousand. And so, we're trying to look at the inflation factor and whatnot, so we discounted it at two percent over ten years. So, you have a net present value increase of two hundred and three thousand. Divide that over the ten-year period, and you have a, a discounted annual increase in debt service cost of twenty thousand, three forty-three. Joel and I were talking, and, and I think your biggest cash outlays are gonna be in the first two or three years of the program. And then, after the program gets on its feet, the three to five-year mark and gets going, I think, basically, that's where you start seeing, seeing your cost savings. And I think probably, you probably got that same comment from the departments that you surveyed and talked with. But anyway, that's, that's basically, we wanted to look at it, not necessarily the cost of the cars, but the, the, the effect on cash flow of budgeting for debt service every year, because that's how we budget these capital purchases, so.
And one of the things I want to show you, on the next page, maybe where it talks about the Charger, the twenty-four thousand dollars, it's the cheapest patrol vehicle we can find now. We've been using, if you remember, we asked you to let us demo one of each, we demoed the Ford Taurus, which is not a Taurus, but it is, Ford Explorer, and we also demoed this. This was the most economical, price-wise, maintenance, and allowing the officers to fit, like I said, it's their office for twelve hours. You can imagine being in, you know, other than answering calls, you're, this is your office for twelve hours. It was the most comforting for them. Twenty-four thousand's base, by the time you add the, all the things from Metropolitan Communications, which we do locally here, they outfit the majority of vehicles around this area. And that's considered your blue lights, your siren, your, your light bar, your push bumper, all those things. Seventy-eight hundred, each car has a dash cam in it. We want to continue that, even though we wear body cams, dash cams are invaluable when we're doing a lot of things that you just, you can't see everything from here, if you know what I'm saying. So, we want to keep doing dash cams. Obviously, the, the better they get with technology, the more they cost. Last year, those were fifty-two hundred dollars, now it's sixty-one hundred. The Panasonic Toughbooks, we've start, we've tried Verizon Netbooks in the past for a hundred ninety-nine, and they last about a month. These, we found, we, we didn't just go reinvent the wheel, we checked with other agencies, and you know, it's one of those things where you get what you pay for. And Sam, I don't know about, if you know about what we've got with them, but Jeffrey and them say that is the best thing we've ever done, is pull the more money in those Toughbooks in the cars. Again, we want to issue a shotgun and a rifle in every car, that's government price there, we can't go buy an AR-15 for that. But we could buy it and put it in the cars now while we're doing this. We recommend going to put in a metal bag, medical bag in each car, so there's, there's one in every car, not just a few on the street at a time. An alpha sensor, a tint meter, puts it up to not, forty-three thousand, five fifty-one. Mr. Triplet got the number from J. Smith. That's one of the things I ask, because if we had twenty-one cars at the fleet, what's it gonna do to insurance? It's three hundred dollars a car annually, sixty-three hundred dollars for all twenty-one increase to insure these vehicles. Next is, I just highlighted some of the benefits, and I got this from talking to some of the other agencies. Chief Deckmar and McGrane's is one of my mentors, he told me a lot of this, they've been doing it for years. The first thing is, you know, studies show, and, and you can talk to agencies and realize this, but you'll lose about an hour of work a day per officer by them coming in early, you know, you have to get there fifteen minutes early. I check the equipment in, you check it out, I get all my stuff out of the car, you put your stuff in the car, then we do that at six P.M. in. And they say the average, you lose about an hour a day for that. Reduction of accidents, that was on the page from that study, but Faith actually is the one that reminded me about that, that she's talked to other cities, H.R., and they've talked about the reduction in accidents. And I can say, I think it's because you take pride in that car, and you know that, you know, this is my car. I mean, it's not mine, it's a privilege, not a right, but I don't have to share it with three other slobs. I'm an OCD guy, I'm gonna keep mine clean, and I'm gonna take pride in it. Retention of officers, that's, again, I mean, that's just, it's one of the things that agencies, again, are doing now. I mean, it's weekly. Last week, it was city of Clarkston, forty-four thousand, starting pay two thousand, sign-on bonus, take-home car, thirty-five miles, as the crow flies, they put it. We've found the average is twenty-five to thirty-five. Sheriff Langley, his policy is, and we've not even talked about proposing a policy, and you guys say you're okay with it, but, Sheriff Langley's, you don't leave the, any county that adjoins here, you don't leave the state. So, the ones that live in Alabama, park it at Bowden Police Department, or a fire department close by, it has to be at a government-building public station that's manned twenty-four hours a day. We've looked, and I don't think we're gonna have anybody that falls outside of the thirty-mile radius. And if, if we had to scale it back to twenty-five, again, that person would be required to park it at the nearest police or fire department with their permission, that's manned twenty-four seven, preferably with cameras in the parking lot. Recruitment of officers, again, it's something, we want to recruit, we want to be able to go on Facebook, because Carrollton's always been a top-notch agency, it still is. We can offer everything on here, from good retirement to training, training, laser, all that stuff. But when it comes to the take-home car, we can't put out there. You know, you saw Villarica, back in November, putting it on there, the take-home car policy, thirty-five mile radius, all these things that we can offer too. So, it is a great recruitment tool for us. Accountability and cleanness, again, it's, it's not gonna be who, who left this car in this shape, or who put that dent in this door, or how did that happen, or why, why we went through three sets of brakes on this car in one year, and this car's only had one or none? It goes back to a personal accountability. It's an excellent, excellent discipline tool, I've heard that from Chief Deckmar and from Chief Meadows. It is a privilege, it is not a right. It's a good way to get an officer's attention, if they're not keeping their car clean, or if you need to, rather than giving them a written reprimand, something that's gonna go in their personnel file forever, or suspending them, which is gonna go to post, is you can take the officer in, and you say, you want thirty days without your car, thirty days with no offer to security. And they'll beg you to suspend them, is what the chiefs tell me, because that, they take pride in that. So, it's a great way for us to hold them accountable. Crime prevention, you're basically gonna double the call, double the number of cars you have on the street at one time, from five A.M. to six A.M. When day shift's on patrol and, or night shift's on patrol and day shift's coming in, you've got two sets of cars on the street. Same thing at five P.M. to six P.M. If I'm on the way to work, Chris talks about, he's on the way to work sometimes, runs up on an accident. If you're in your POV, your personal operating boot, you don't do that, you don't get out with it, it's dangerous. But you can run up on an accident, you can catch calls on your way in, it's just, it's a boost of visibility. I think we put on our always-on call.
And I've run out, thanks, please.
I'm gonna follow, crime prevention, I'll go down when we start talking about this. The take-home program, to me, is kind of a danger benefit, it's such a turn effect on possible criminal activity. Just with the car sitting out at apartments or houses in certain subdivisions or neighborhoods. I know as myself, there's a car, there's a police car at Southern Hills, and every time I go to feed you, I slow down, every time. So, I think that's another benefit.
Increase visibility is.
And I always like to look at what it costs in worst-case scenario, and again, net present value is a real calculation, and that, and that, you know, that's, those are real numbers. But worst-case scenario, you're talking about a ninety-two thousand dollar increase to Joel's budget per year, which is around forty-seven hundred dollars per officer that would benefit from these cars. So, that is not a small number, but I think Joel's budget's about seven million dollars. It's just to benefit officers, to retain officers, it's, it's not a, it's not a terribly large number either, it's a reasonable number. And again, when you start looking at the savings on maintenance and the savings on debt services, you get past that sixth year. That number's actually a lot smaller than ninety-two thousand a year. I also, and I mentioned this to Jim, I had a call to one of the local banks, and asked the bank president, and I said, you know, can you be three point one percent on six years? And, and he said, I may can, so I guess I'm telling you, we're not married to this company. We would, we will look for the best rate, but the numbers work at the three point one percent. So, if we can get, if we can finance locally and get a better rate, we'll do that.
How many more will we have to lease each year?
Five? We don't know, no, we talked about that. You have some now with a hundred thousand plus, but again, those are gonna be assigned to an officer. So, we plan on, hopefully, not coming back to you for, for a few years, to ask to add more cars to this. I talked to Jim about that yesterday, I don't believe him, you know, that saying, we won't come back for cars for ten years. Because obviously, we've got some out of these fifty-one that we have, that are high mileage now. But those will be, like, three of them, we know will be the backup cars. We know that the SROs will drive the high-mileage cars. We know that the bike patrol officers will be assigned the cars with high mileage. So, we're hoping that we won't have to come back to you for a few years to add more cars to the lease. But obviously, it's, it will be less than buying five a year. And also, just keep in mind, one thing Chris reminded me about, is that forty-three thousand number will go down, because we continue, we plan to continue purchasing Chargers, so all that equipment will swap over, where it's not now.
What about the bicycle cops and Harley motorcycle cops? They, they have their own vehicles, I guess, right?
They will with this, they, they don't ride their bikes.
Well, I know.
Now, the motorcycles do, though, that's a good question, motorcycle guys, we'll allow them to take them home, weather permitting. Because we don't have anywhere to park them here safely. But yes, they'll be assigned a car, and we checked with other agencies, that's the norm, assigning a car, because a lot of times, bike patrol comes in, if day shift right now, we've got three openings, two in the academy and two in the training program. So, day shift, and three on night duty pregnant. So, right now, we're saying bike patrol may, this sergeant may say, I had one call in sick, I need you to get in a car today. So, yes, they would be assigned a car, along with the motorcycle units, because we don't, our policy is above ninety-five and below, I don't remember the number, that we'd prefer you not to be on a motorcycle.
This question, maybe, just a little bit premature, but what plans do you have for the parking lot? Since we'll have all that space out there?
Not to have to park way down there to go on court date, I mean, I think it will free up a lot of. Because see, you got all the cars in.
For the customers not to have to park.
Yeah, right, well, well, for officers too, like, we, we tell officers, on duty, you park down there, you don't park up here, you keep this for the people that come here.
Yeah.
So, you won't have twenty, I mean, you won't have every day or night, people driving their personal vehicle, you're parking it, then going in the gate and getting the car, and then, doing that again at six P.M., so it would free up. then doing that again at 6:00 PM. So it would free up parking for city business, whatever.
That's good.
That's good. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, I think the benefits are really far out there. Or just add to the city really. Just as that by itself. I think they're great benefits and I think we need to retain.
I promise you, I mean, Chris and I talked, you get this and we get that pay scale fixed and we're going to be out recruiting. I don't know if we're going to do billboards. I don't think we'll have to. But if you let us put that on social media because of our reputation of, honestly, it's because we're treated well by the administration and the governing body and you know that. People know that. We're not on the front page of the paper. Y'all bickering and arguing about everything all the time and I'm not going to name other cities. And you know, Chris and I have talked today, we're one of the few agencies that we can name the last three police chiefs since then four decades. That's rare. Not saying it's anything. I mean, I've been blessed, but it's rare that you do that.
I'm going to ask you about the GPS stuff that's come out from fleets. Have you got any kind of GPS?
Every car in the laptop has a GPS on it. I can log in on my computer at work and I can see, it'll have a badge number, 247 is here, 238. We've had that for years with this new...
Is it overrunning, is speeding or whatever?
Now, Chris and I...
Dash cam that we have in the car?
Oh, yeah.
When we're in high-speed pursuits, we can go back and view the officer's speed the whole time.
Brake and...
You can pull it up, braking, speed, everything if you ever need it.
Does it also give you just them drive in general?
I don't know if it has to be recording or not, but I can get you an actual on that.
You could always put that feature on it. I don't know that I want to know.
Well, I kind of do.
I know where you're going, yeah. Yeah, I think with a GPS device, you can do about anything you want to.
Yeah.
I mean, are y'all going to police that a little bit? I mean, far as...
What we do now is we're required on state certification and we did it before it's required, is we review, sergeant's required, I'm going to get the numbers right, but a sergeant is required to review two officers a week patrol video. So I review, anytime you activate your lights and siren, your camera automa, your lights or your camera automatically comes on. So they review that and they review you on a call and how you treated that citizen. And then we have a system called Guardian Tracking System where they go in and they enter that, hey, there's, listen, we've got a lot of new officers right now and they're not, they're less than two years on the road experience. So once you're cut loose from FTO, we don't know how you're treating citizens because you don't have a training officer with you. So we ask them to look at two of their videos a week at random and put Guardian entry that, you know what, Chris did a great job. Chris, you know what, we needed to work on him. He turned his back on a traffic stop three times. Turns his back on the violator. And then the training officer can say, you know what, we're going to implement that training for this recruit.
You know, though, maybe we need to do that on every city vehicle. Is have the GPS. I don't know what it costs, but just have it in that way. We would know if somebody's where they shouldn't be or if they're driving recklessly or whatever. Let's just, let's just see what that costs.
I guess Interop has the built-in, some of the older vehicles have USB GPS receivers.
But the newer Panasonic...
In Interop tracks.
I mean, we stuck them in some stuff and people call up, so your truck's running this way. You clock him in and says, no, according to GPS, he's running 56 miles an hour. You know what I mean?
It's just, I mean, and you probably know what the stuff costs. I'm not pricing.
Yeah, are there, you said people call in. Are there numbers on the vehicles that say?
I always do. Everything, every place.
Are there city trucks and stuff like that too?
There are numbers on them. There may be a rare vehicle that doesn't have it. There may be, you know, I don't know. I'm a pick-and-pipe. There may be one at the rec department that doesn't have it, but most of the police have it.
All ours look like, so we have to put numbers on them.
But you know what, that's something we'll look at and just see what it would cost to put GPS on everything because it...
I mean, just even without the lights running, I mean, that would give you an idea.
It will because the GPS works. We can log in at any time and see where you're at and whether you're moving or stationary. So I think we can probably call Interop and say, we want this feature activated on the tracking device. I don't think it's going to cost us, our department, anything.
I already do.
Just on other vehicles, Joel, we may want to do, it may cost something added to those.
Or if you go over a certain speed, it automatically triggers, hey, why are we doing that?
Now, McGrane has that. I do know that Lou's told me that, that anytime it reaches a certain speed, maybe it's 80, then the sergeant, supervisor gets sent a, either a text or an email. But he'll know, okay, he's on a burglary in progress right now or he's...
There's a reason.
On his, Duck and Donuts just put a sale on. I mean, you know what I'm saying? They'll know the hot, the hot sign just...
I was thinking the weather storm myself, but I...
So that is, you know, very good, very good. And I think we have it, we probably have it. We don't realize we got the information.
Well, I like it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And listen, we got our first CPA of the year Assistant Police Cam. We got 48 over there. It's packed house. If you don't mind if we go to it.
Okay with that.
Thank you. Y'all get out 48, come see them.
I want to come to that one time.
Miss Studdard.
The, the resolution that I have not passed out yet, I think we're losing passing down. The next item on the agenda, if you recall, in December, you guys reviewed the accessory dwelling unit resolution. At that time, you asked us to go back and apply some design standards to these, architectural standards. That's what we've done. If you go to page three, starting at number seven, we looked at putting some architectural standards on there. I'll tell you, Rory had asked also about some, kind of some sustainability measures to apply to these. And, you know, I know Rory, you had said, you know, maybe not make it LEED certified. I'm actually having trouble finding some specific provisions for that. And so all you see here today are the architectural standards. I can go through them, everything from exterior finish to roof pitch, to entrances and how stairways would be situated on these sites and doorways, buffers, parking. And then one other thing we added was we wanted to clarify that it would require an additional water and sewer tap fee. I'm not sure how you want us to proceed at this point, but I've got this document. It's ready to go. If y'all want to see it at your next meeting, we can show it to you or we can let it, let it die on the vine. It just depends on what you guys want to do.
One thing that came up to me was people didn't want to see just a building pop up behind someone's house that just turned into some sort of slummy place. So if you're actually going to invest in something, you've got to make it both look good and there's going to be a significant cost to it to really drive the market rate of what that rental could be if you were going to rent it or just the quality. So it didn't decrease the value of the houses next to it. It would be an in-law suite or whatever it might be. So that was, those were some of the things that I had gotten called about was, hey, what would this thing, or what could these look like? And are they just slummy one-bedroom things behind people's houses? And that's exactly what I didn't want to see occur. So that's why in the last meeting I asked to be tabled because, to try to increase those. One thing on here, I said the 300 square feet. I know there was a discussion I had with somebody that wasn't in favor of this that said, well, it's too small. So maybe increasing that minimum size. Because a 300-square-foot place is pretty, pretty darn small. Maybe like 450 or something.
To be honest with you, I've never had anybody even tell me they were in favor of this dwelling thing. More people are opposed to, you know, the floor.
Really?
Especially in our inner side, loop rock square.
Which is exactly where you'd want to see density. You'd want to see something like that pop up there.
Get more people saying like, we don't need that. We don't need that. What are y'all hearing? Of course, out there in your area, I don't think anybody's going...
Who's driving? I mean, why is this, Eric, why is this popping up now? What's driving this now? What, why?
Well, we've been, I guess we started the discussion with you guys back in September.
I'm sorry, I'm asking wrong. Why didn't this come up five years ago or six years ago or 10 years ago? Why is it now popping up? 2018, 2019?
Well, it's not necessarily unique to our community. A lot of communities are doing it to basically increase density without having to build additional infrastructure. It's kind of the, you hear the, kind of the tagline infill, infill lots. Let's, let's look at, you know, increasing our density and growing our population and growing housing by using infill lots. It's kind of a similar scenario. Also, it's, it's a cost-effective way to provide housing that's, you know, might be rental, but you've also got it, it's owner-occupied, if that makes sense. So it's really a trend that a lot of communities are moving towards. That's the best thing. Decatur, I mean, we've looked at, I guess it was, it wasn't Coweta County, but it was Coweta County that we looked at. There's a lot of communities that are doing it. Most of them are urban areas or in more urban areas.
Well, let me, let me just give you some. Dalton, they doing it?
Oh, gosh, I don't...
Rome, Douglasville, McGrane, Noonan, Griffin, Badasta.
The, I'm not...
I'm not trying, I'm just curious. I mean, I really don't care what downtown Atlanta, Fulton County's doing.
Right. And this is not, this stuff right here we pulled is not from, necessarily from downtown Atlanta. Decatur, I will say, is in Atlanta and we did look at a lot of their ordinance provisions. Like I said, we did look at, like I said, Coweta County was one. I had a hard time finding architectural standards. I had to go outside the state to find those. And, you know, I pulled them from a couple of different places. And I'll tell you, the intent behind the architectural standards is to basically not take away that single-family nature of the lot. That's why you, you know, the stairwells, any kind of exterior stairwell has to be hidden. You can't have two entrances that are kind of visible from the street, if that makes sense, because you don't want it to look as though it's multifamily. You still want it to have that single-family character. But like I said, this is just one of those things that if you guys aren't, you know, the city may not be ready for it. And it may be that, you know, we look at this, you know, in five years. But there are communities that are doing it. But this is not unique to Carrollton.
But if you got this space on a lot with a house sitting on it, why wouldn't you just add on to the house?
You could with this, so...
That's part of this.
Yeah, you could.
But you could still come even without this accessory dwelling and get a permit to add on.
But you're not allowed to rent that space.
You couldn't have a separate unit though. You wouldn't be able to have a separate kitchen and, and unit essentially. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't be able to have a separate residential unit. But you could, now, this is attached and detached accessory dwelling. So you could see it in a scenario where somebody takes their attic space and makes, and it's got to meet the building code and the fire code and all that good stuff. But you could, you could either have attached or detached. You could have a detached garage, for instance, that somebody, and you see those in town. I mean, that's not that uncommon. Even in Carrollton, you've got, I mean, I can think of two or three different instances where there's kind of detached garages in the back. Usually, it's something that's been grandfathered in over the years because it's, you know, been there forever kind of thing.
I've had one at my house for 20 years, a detached, but it was...
Right. So, but like I said, this is just a way, it's, you know, you hear that tagline, smart growth. You know, how do you, how do you grow a community in density without having to go another mile out and tear down basically a forest to build another subdivision? And this is just one of those ways to increase, you know, kind of residential opportunities without having to build new roads, build new sewer lines, build new water lines, that sort of thing. Also, it makes it affordable for people to purchase houses when they can have kind of an income source too.
Can you give us some worst and best-case scenarios that are in existence right now in Carrollton of this?
The best or worst?
Both, if you can.
I don't know about worst. I mean, there's a, there's some properties on, there's one on Rome Street, I think that's got an apartment behind detached. There's a unit on Long, at the corner of Longview and South Street, that's got several units on the, on the same lot.
Big tall white house, is that it?
There's a, there's a, I think it's a single-story, the one I'm thinking about.
Oh, I know a story about that.
Yeah. There's another one on Longview that's got an apartment above and it's, now it's changed colors a few times, but it's on the right as you're going, I guess, south on Longview Street. A lot of them are in established neighborhoods that are just basically historic neighborhoods. You see them a good bit. Because this was, this is not a new thing, met, about your question. This is something that was done a long time ago and then everybody kind of moved away from it. And now we're coming back to it. It's kind of full circle.
That's what I'm wondering, like, is there an influx of interest in this particular? I'm kind of like, erring on the side of mitt a little bit. Like, I mean, how many calls have we gotten? I've never heard anybody talk about this, like, never, ever.
You know, one thing we do get is we get a lot of interest in residential housing because there's a perceived shortage or actual shortage of residential housing. You know, there's a lot of, I know I've spoken with a lot of realtors that, that, you know, they just say there's just not enough housing available. You know, we've spoken with leaders in the community, Tim and I both have, I guess, that would agree that there's just not enough housing available for the jobs that we basically have. In other words, we're losing residents. They work here in Carrollton, but they don't live here because there's nowhere for them to live. And that's just, like I said, these are all, you know, small solutions that basically help a larger problem. And this is just one of those.
I'm not against this. I just want us to look at other viable solutions to the problem other than just this. I want there to be more than one fire in the pot, if that makes, or one hot dog in the pot, or however they say it nowadays.
We just passed this thing last meeting, 900 square foot, and you should own it. Maybe you can give them that chance to take off, try to...
But before, we're trying to do something else. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'll tell you, we're not trying to champion this at all. I know it was something Rory was interested in and, and we just, we just need some direction. You know, if you want it on the agenda, vote up or down, we can do that. If you don't want it on there, obviously, if two of you want it on there, it would go on there.
Maybe we set it on, if it, I mean, of course, it's up to those two. But maybe we set it on the fire, just push it to the back just a little bit, not let it die, but reserve it for the...
The thing is, if, if you were going to pass it, we wanted to make sure that there, that it was quality. But if you're going to vote it down, the quality won't matter. It won't be there anyway. So we just need a direction.
I'm interested there. I don't know.
I've had, I've had three people opposed to you against it. And I've had nobody for it. So my interest is I'm with, I'm with Matt.
Almost called you Mayor Hertel.
At least you called me something nice.
I'm with Gerald, just put on the back burner.
Okay. Don't even, don't even put it on the agenda then.
I'm always speaking for me.
Obviously, if two of you want it on the agenda, it'll go. But at least you've seen it. You know what it says and you can vote on it as you will. But again, we're not trying to champion this. We're just, we just need a direction.
I mean, it'd have to come to appeals or setbacks and everything else, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily, no.
Side setbacks and rear setbacks. I mean, you don't think it would come to the appeals board and...
Right. And so the use itself couldn't go to the appeals board. That's not something that's eligible for them to...
But the lot size is going to dictate what they can do.
Correct. So it's got to...
We have sides, rear setbacks already. So you would have to come to the appeals board probably to get this done anyway.
Um, not... It depends on the lot size. Like I said, if you've got a 15,000-square-foot lot, it just depends on lot size. So they can't review the use, but they would have to review it if it was in the setbacks, for sure.
Is there some structure to allow for a five-foot setback inside of your existing five-foot?
I think to Gerald's point, having multiple different things to try to tackle it at the same time. Instead of, I don't think this is a, would rely on this to solve any problem. I think it would be, you would see, what you're seeing in this town is, it is a walkable community in certain areas. To create more density in those areas, you'd look at either putting in more apartment complexes or quadruplexes, duplexes, smaller single-family houses, which we're seeing is going to cost $200,000 for a new home. What you're not going to be able to do is get the young professionals that are moving here for teaching positions, nursing positions, whatever it might be. We, we gave tax credits to Colorado Premium that were bringing jobs in here making 15 bucks an hour. So we're incentivizing those sorts of jobs coming here and we've got no place for them to go. This is no, by no means a solution to the huge problem, but I think it can, it's one step in the right direction. I don't think you're going to see a ton of these pop up. And I think it would be good to actually look at it as, let's make sure we're only putting it in certain areas. Do, do we need to have accessory dwelling units that are a mile out, a mile outside of or away from space like a grocery store or the downtown? I don't see the need. I see putting it where there are already amenities so they can actually utilize those.
So you're proposing a mile off the square?
Or, well, yeah, what, maybe, maybe it is a distance to amenities, but an overlay of such. That way, it eliminates it from certain areas because there, I don't think it needs to be in all, I don't think it's a blanket approach to put it across the city. It would be the best idea. And that's what I've heard also, is do all neighborhoods want to see this? Probably not. Do our dense infill, walkable spaces, there is demand to, for living in those spaces. And I see that would be a helpful way to utilize the fact that there is the infrastructure already there, the roads, the pipes and everything like that.
So that colloquialism that I was referring to earlier was, let's not pull up, put all our eggs in one...
in one basket, but I guess, let's maybe put all our eggs in one basket and have more viable solutions than just this one to our housing shortage. 'Cause I like the idea that we're actually, uh, addressing the housing shortage, but, um, I would just like to see more options.
And I think this would be one of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Different ways for people to live.
And what we did last time was, is one, so.
And I appreciate you stepping up the standards, 'cause I don't wanna see.
Yeah, we didn't know if it would pass or not, but if it, if it was something you were gonna pass, we wanted good standards, so.
And I, I agree with that completely.
Well, I'm okay putting it on the agenda, so, second.
Co-sponsor.
We'll vote, vote up or down.
Okay. We'll be going to directions. Oh, the next item is, uh, just city paid alcohol at events. It's, it's kind of been an unwritten policy that the city doesn't pay for alcohol. When y'all travel, uh, if there's any alcohol, the city doesn't pay for it, people pay it out of their pockets. Um, we had a Christmas party recently, there was alcohol there. Our attorney paid for the alcohol, the city paid for the food. Uh, we do have events where it, it's just the nature of the event, there's gonna be, there's gonna be alcohol there, and frankly, in some ways, the city's paying for it in a roundabout way. They may be paying a caterer who's providing it, so I just need some direction. We need direction, and, and, you know, if you gentlemen could tell me which think there's a consensus, then we'll write a policy and have you vote on it, so we know that that's, that's written down. And I, I don't care one way or the other, I just need direction, so, uh, I think you understand what I'm driving at, so.
Legality of the city being.
I mean, it's certainly possible, um, but we, I would imagine that, you know, it, those kinds of things would be covered by insurance, but I couldn't rule out the possibility that if the city provided alcohol at it at the end, and for whatever reason, somebody was overserved, and then they went out again in the accident, that it wouldn't come back on, you know, us, but.
I'm gonna vote that we leave the policy as it is, because I think it, it would just look good on our part to not use, um, public funds to purchase alcohol. That sounds a little frivolous to me. And if I wanna drink, I think I should, I could pay for it, or is that a policy?
Okay, city attorney. There's not, there's no written policy, so we, we just, we wanna write a policy that matches what you gentlemen.
Do we have to write that?
We, we'll, we'll.
Oh.
We'll write it down. I think, I just think things kind of are slipping through and being paid in a roundabout way, we need to be clear. I mean.
He said he thinks it's being paid indirectly.
Yeah, I think it's being paid indirectly, and I just think we need to decide how we're gonna do business.
If we wanna stop that in practice.
And if I'm not giving all the scenarios, please state the scenario.
And I'll, a lot of them sadly fall in my department, but like, for instance.
Imagine that, Eric.
I know, I was almost afraid to say it, but, uh, no, I mean, like, for instance, at our, at our art gallery openings, we provide wine. We have historically provided wine since, I mean, before I got here. But that's what, that, what was done. I'm not sure how it was paid for before. Um, we've tried to find sponsors to do that, um, and let that be kind of their in-kind patronage to the art center and that sort of stuff. Uh, it gets a little bit trickier, though. Um, historically, the Taste of Carrollton provides a, a beer. Um, and there's, you can buy a beer bracelet if you go to Taste of Carrollton. Everybody, you know, you pay twenty dollars and you get so many tickets, and you get to taste the different beers. Um.
Now, in that case, though, the city's not paying for it. The people are, whoever's drinking is paying for it, because of buying the bracelet.
Cor- correct, but the city ultimately is, is basically paying for it. Uh, so what, what we do, now, we, we'd make money on it, for sure.
Right. They're, they're serving it. The city's serving it, but the, the consumer's actually paying for it.
Well, hold on, I'm, I'm. Man, I'm confused, too. Are we talking about serving the public or serving, I'm talking about employees should have to buy their own. Like, if we all go to, wherever we go and have a drink in Atlanta or whatever, the city should not pay for that. That's what I'm saying.
He's not saying that we go down to Calaway, that the, the city's gonna pay for our alcohol.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we should not do that. I didn't know we were talking about publicly.
I'm concerned about these events.
Yeah, I think Tim's concern is really more the public events, because what's, what's happened to happen is we're having to find somebody to funnel, uh, funnel it through, so that we're not basically, because on the front end, we are paying for it, but all these events that, that I'm about to mention, we make money on. The Brew, the Blues and Brew's Fest, that's another one. Um, you buy, you're, you know, we've, this, we've had this two years in a row now, um, and we make money on it, so the city's not really incurring any costs in the long run, but we're still having to pay that invoice on the front end. Uh, and so, you know, Tim gets real nervous about it, and I do, too, about whether or not that's something you guys want us to con- continue to do, or we just nix it and just not allow it all together. Um, the, I'm trying to think of some one event.
Hold on, let's give, give me an example of nixing it. So let's say we nix it, disallow it.
We would just disallow.
At the next.
And what happens at Taste of Carrollton?
That's what I'm asking. What would happen to Taste of Carrollton?
We wouldn't provide the beer, the beer trailer like we've provided it. It's the only way to do it. Um, if it's a clear-cut policy, because right now, what we do is we have, uh, basically, one of the restaurants on the square will sponsor it, and then we'll pay the restaurant, but essentially, we're buying that on the front end and then making money on the back end.
I thought the, I thought the restaurant was selling. I didn't know the city had any role in that.
I'm surprised the restaurants hadn't already.
See, that's what, I want you to know that. If you're okay with it, I'm fine, but I want you to.
Yeah, I mean, we'll make, I'll give you an example on Taste of Carrollton. I mean, we'll make, I mean, we'll make twenty-five thousand dollars if it's a good, you know, and that's after all of our cost. So we definitely are making money, and, and the beer trailer is one of those ways, because the tickets are, like I said, it's twenty dollars.
And that money funds Main Street.
And it helps fund Main Street, and it helps fund projects that Main Street wants to do, so, um.
It brings right back into that area.
Correct. So the arts, uh, center, the, all the gallery openings, the wine that's provided, we do not sell that. Um, so that's basically a sunk cost. It's not very, it's not, not a ton of money, but, um, it is a, you know, it is a cost. And we can still do it through the caterer, but we just wanna be very clear that that's what the money's being used for.
So has anybody complained, like, what brought us to this place, like?
Me, nothing, me being nervous about it, 'cause it.
And is it nervous because of legal?
No, it's nervous because we preach that the city doesn't pay for alcohol, and yet, we're paying for it in a roundabout way, and I just want y'all to know that. If you're fine with what we're doing, we'll keep doing it, but I wanna be, I want you to know we're doing it. And again, we're not talking about.
I haven't preached it on that. I haven't preached it on.
Right.
I never heard anybody even mention anything about that.
Okay, well, again, this one's on me. It, it just made me nervous. I wanted you to know what we were doing. And it seems to be growing. You know, we have more events, and they're more popular, more people down there, and we're doing more alcohol-related events. Uh, and again, we're not talking about paying for your alcohol when you have a meal. That's something that, you know, people have to pay out of their own pocket.
Oh, that's what I thought you were talking about. So I say, let's, I, I would vote in favor of that if, I trust your expertise and your, um.
So keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah, well, no, I say, let's come up with some kind of policy to put it in writing, so you feel better.
But that would, but are you okay with what we're doing? We, we will, we will write that policy based on what we're doing.
Are you okay with the Beer Wagon being at Mayfest and making twenty-five thousand?
I've never even noticed the Beer Wagon at any event, so.
It's at Taste, but.
Okay.
Where I, where I come down is if, if it's not a legal concern about liability, certainly, then it gets back to the ethic, moral.
Yeah, certainly.
And maybe I need to review that one myself more, but I'm okay with it as of right now.
And I tell you, we reviewed this with the insurance company.
Yeah. Anything we do, we make sure we're insured. So, um, like, the, the Beer Fest that we, the Blues and Brew's.
I guess here's what I need help on. Why do we need a written policy regarding this issue? It sounds like it's been marketed just fine.
I guess, I, I would just, I would feel more comfortable.
But to me, when you design a policy, you want a particular outcome, that's why you want a policy. Or you wanna prevent a particular outcome from occurring, so what do you, are you thinking it's might take advantage of this?
No, I just want you to know what we're doing. I don't want you to say, gosh, I had no idea y'all were doing that, and I want you to know what we're doing.
Which is the case. That's, that's, I didn't, I didn't pay attention.
I didn't.
I'm okay with the way it seems to work.
I, I am just status quo.
Okay.
I mean, that's me.
I am, too.
All right. Well, you know what, I'm, let me make it even easier. I'm gonna write down what we do, and we'll send it to you. You don't even have to vote on it, but you'll know. That way, you, you know what we were doing.
And all four of y'all have been buying alcohol for it.
My last Mayfest.
Let's not change that.
The last Mayfest Beer Wagon was the hottest ticket up there.
What'd you say?
Last Mayfest, the Beer Wagon was the hottest, well, Taste of Carrollton.
Yes.
Was the hottest ticket up there, so.
We do make significant money off of those.
It just stayed right there.
Right.
And then, um, our brewery.
Printers Ale.
Printers Ale, one of the ones that had it.
Uh, they, they did have Printers Ale, Printers Ale beer on tap at the Taste of Carrollton, um, but they also had some, they had about, was it ten? About, how many, how many fit in that? There's, there's a bunch of beer. Um, unfortunately, I'm not allowed to drink at the Taste of Carrollton, so I can't tell you, but, uh, yeah, probably about ten different beers.
To be honest with you, none of us up here really should be, they're walking around with it, it's a rep, right?
Yeah, so.
Okay, the next item is chain development downtown, and I, this is something Rory asked us to talk about. It just, uh, and I, I'll just let you address it if you don't mind, if you want.
Um, I saw in another city, but I don't really even remember where it was, uh, trying to retain the local business, um, locally-owned business, small business feel that we have currently, and it's only just to say, what, what right, what confines can we, can we look at limiting that to advocate for those small businesses? What, and we, I think you picked, or picked on, we don't wanna see a Dollar General pop up on the square. I think we can all say, hey, that doesn't seem to fit from a feel sort of standpoint of what the historic downtown is. Um, so in what, what parameters can we set to be able to, whether it's, um, certain signage, or whatever it might be, or through the business, uh, license application part, I think that would be a really good question for you, Chuck.
But it, I think it ultimately will be, yeah. Um, I mean, typically, the way you would try to, um, you know, restrict land uses are through zoning, uh, and assigning, you know, particular land uses to particular zoning categories. Uh, another way is through your design and development standards. Uh, and I'll give you a perfect example. Uh, when we, uh, when the voters passed package sales and allowed the city to do that, there was a concern that we might have a package store on every corner. So Gerald remembers, I guess you may have been the only one on the council at the time, I can't remember Jim was on board then or not, but the way we did, um, the way we handled that is we said, well, you have to have a store of a certain footprint, uh, and you have to maintain an inventory of a certain amount. And so we created some barriers to entry, you know, in order to prevent there from being a liquor store on every corner. Um, and, you know, so that, those are ways you can do it. Um, it's hard to say, we don't want a particular name store here, uh, because, you know, that gets to be a slippery slope. But, well, I guess what I would say is if there are particular, maybe we treat the symptoms. If there are particular things you don't want to see maybe in the downtown area, uh, that we look at the zoning ordinance and, uh, and say, okay, this is what is permitted in the downtown area, and, um, you know, these are the things we don't want coming into the downtown area, but we do want coming into the downtown area and look at the design standards and all of that. We, I just need to know from you guys, you know, what, what it is you want us, what, what the mission is, I mean, what it is you want us to accomplish.
You know, Chuck, I grew up here, so did Peter and a couple more people in this room. When I was a kid, we had dime stores, five-and-dimes, nickel stores. The square was a whole nother type place. It was hustling and busting. There was a Greyhound station downtown, hotel, remember that?
I bought G.I. Joe's right there.
Yeah, we had like a little dime store over here where we could buy, but it was a talking bird in the store, remember that? And it was charming, and it was great.
Well, Colonial used to be where Harland Deli's was.
That's right. Old Tasco, momma bought all that. Peters.
I mean, when you say, when you say chain, you, you really, you couldn't have a chain restaurant there.
Right, and it brings, you know what, that brings variety and it brings ambiance. I'm not against the chain coming downtown, because it brings more charm and more variety, and it brings a certain ambiance and a certain nostalgia back to downtown as well. What I am against is, would be, say, and I'm not gonna name any particular businesses at all, but let's say there is a five-and-dime, don't even call them that anymore, I don't know what they call them now, but there's a five-and-dime that moves down here, and they put a big orange neon sign that's not in keeping with this story, um, look and feel it downtown, I'm against that. But I say, you know, it goes back to what you just said, talk about the design and development standards. If we, if they're not already developed, but if we further develop those, so if a, um, I'm just gonna name a restaurant that's not even here, like a Cheddar's, y'all probably heard of Cheddar's before, sort of like an Applebee's or something like that. If they wanna come here, they could make Cheddar's look the way it would look if it were next to Walmart, which would have a more, I guess, contemporary kind of, uh, commercial look, but if they could go in keeping with, say, the old-town feel, the historic feel of downtown, and have Che- Cheddar's over here next to, say, my place, uh, I think that's absolutely fine. So I'm not against chain restaurants coming to downtown at all. I'm, I'm just against maybe those chain restaurants looking like a chain restaurant or a chain business.
Well, another good example is when we created the Bankhead Corridor. And one of the, one of the concerns in the corridor was that you have a lot of these big box stores that have located there historically, but now have moved other places, and you get empty big boxes and empty shopping centers. So one of the things in the Bankhead Corridor that we provide is that there's a maximum square footage of fifty thousand square feet, I think it's fifty thousand square feet, for any, for any particular business. However, they can come before you and get a special use permit in order to exceed that, but it at least gives you guys a gatekeeping function in that regard.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know, you know, and, and I know that, you know, some businesses, some, um, let's just say Dollar General, you know, they have, they have a particular profile for what they're looking for, we want a certain number of traffic counts, we have to have a minimum square footage of this amount or whatever. Um, I mean, you, you could, in theory, create a zoning ordinance that says, uh, okay, in this zoning district, we don't want buildings, commercial buildings above a certain size that might, in effect, exclude that user. Now, it would be a broader net, because it would exclude other users who may want a similar-sized footprint. Um, so from, from our standpoint, staff standpoint, it's just really a policy question for you guys. I mean, what is it that you don't want, and where is it that you don't want it, and then we can try to come up with something. But I mean, and I, and I know Rory's not suggesting it, but I couldn't, I couldn't draft a resolution that says there shall be no more Dollar Generals in the city of Carrollton. I mean, that wouldn't, would stand screwy, and I know that's not what's being proposed. But, uh, but if, if, if there is a concern about the impact that it's having on, you know, established businesses or something, I mean, there may be some things we could do to address some of the symptoms. Again, if we just know what you guys wanna do and where you are.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know, it goes back to the Peachtree City model as well, where, you know, you see that Taco Bell, and it's nothing like a Taco Bell. My brother lives in Albuquerque. You see that McDonald's, it looks nothing like a McDonald's area. I'm like, man, that's McDonald's, it's an adobe. You know, so we can be creative and use our imaginations a little bit more to, um, develop these business standard, I mean, these, um, design standards and development standards to, uh, adhere to the look and feel of Carrollton. But what is the look and feel of Carrollton? Do we really know? We don't really have a visual identity here, anyway. We could say what it is or say what we think it is.
Altogether original, that's for sure.
Well, we got that. I mean, I'm talking about, that, that's something that comes out of one's mouth. I'm talking about visually, what is the look of Carrollton?
And I, I agree.
Yeah, there's no Carrollton look.
But I think one thing that downtown is, it, it's a unique historic downtown, and, uh, what I've, what you typically see is chain restaurants or chain stores are formula-based, so it's, it's designed not necessarily just for the site. It's designed, and they all, you know, when you go into a Chili's, they all look like a Chili's, um.
However, in DC and in Savannah, have you been to a Chili's there? Have you seen the, uh, Outback Steakhouse in Savannah? Or the Joe's Crab Shack in Savannah? It looks like an old-fashioned, wrought iron, turn of the century, charming place, but you go in there and it's a Chili's, or it's a, whatever it is. Now, and let me say this, too, out of all fairness to the, all the restaurants, you know, on the square, I don't think a Chili's or a Cheddar's or an Outback can hold a flame to the food that we have downtown, 'cause there's nothing like it.
I think, I, what I'd like to understand, 'cause Rory is the ones proposing, is what, what is like your ultimate intent here? Is it, it, 'cause Gerald, I think, what Gerald, it sounds like he's interested in, and I don't want him to put words in your mouth, is aesthetics and how it looks.
Absolutely.
But maybe you're not as interested in that as you are trying to protect the, you know, but as an example, the coffee shop on the square, maybe you're, you would, you think that's better than a Starbucks?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a bit of both. I think what you're saying is.
Because, well, let me, all right.
Go ahead.
All right, well, yeah, I probably wouldn't quite think so, but if the property owners, whoever owns a, a, a place where Starbucks might go, they might get really upset if they can't sell that, their property for whatever it is, because we put this, this limitation. So there's, we're gonna get, if we go down this road, we're gonna get pushback.
Oh, yeah.
From the folks that own property, anywhere in this.
So, yeah, I think that you, you've, you've hit the nail on the head. There are the two pieces. From an aesthetic standpoint. From an aesthetic standpoint, maintaining the look of the historic downtown is a priority. From a, um, from the other side though, of what is actually there, one thing that creates the aesthetic other than just the visual one, um, is the fact that they are locally owned and small business. They aren't chains. Um, and I think that is a draw. I think one thing that we do have is a lot of really good restaurants and to be able to do that is absolutely wonderful. You don't see that in a lot of towns. You see a lot of, um, other, other businesses showing up and we've got a really good, uh, a lot of good food options. So it's not like I've heard there's going to be this thing, this thing or that thing coming in and we're trying to prevent it. It's more just, what we have here is something quite good. Let's try to maintain it and advocate for those locally owned businesses.
And I think we do that every day, but Peter Pit is a chain, you do realize that? There's Peter Pits in other town. But looking at Peter Pit on the outside, it doesn't look like, say, and I hate calling out businesses, but it doesn't look like a McDonald's or Zaxby's.
I mean, so Peter Pit would have gone in Rory, had this been passed two years ago.
I'm not sure, I don't know.
It wouldn't have been a chain. They're all over the United States, sir.
Lafayette just opened up.
Lafayette is a chain. So is, uh, I see Irish pubs in all the cities, cities, is that a, ma'am?
Otters, the new Otters.
That's a chain. So is the Brown Dog a chain? There's Brown Dogs everywhere, but there's a lot of chains in our downtown.
So then maybe it is from more of a aesthetic standpoint. If there, if there's not enough support for, like, I think the goal is really to make, maintain the feel of the downtown.
And I think that feel has, has, is dependent upon and has always relied upon free enterprise. And without that, then.
Is the aesthetic's under, under assault that I'm unaware of?
Why don't we pull Savanna's? Why don't we get Savanna's over to see how they do it?
I'd caution you a little bit on Savannah because Savannah's pretty unique. I mean, virtually the entire city of Savannah is a historic.
Okay.
And so that constrains, I mean, and, and the effect of that is any material alteration to the facade, to the exterior has to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. And so that's one reason, Gerald, why everything looks historical.
Yeah, I like that.
You can put a use in there, but you're constrained with what you can do to the outside of the building uh, without getting a certificate of appropriateness from.
Let's, so hold on, let's educate me on it. The square, the way it looks today was because of individual efforts by individuals decided to make it look that way. The city didn't come in and say, by gosh, you have to have the facade look this way. I'm right or wrong?
It's not locally designated. It's not a locally designated historic district, the downtown is not.
What does that mean there?
Uh, that means basically exactly what Chuck just said, that they've got a Historic Preservation Commission in Savannah doing the architectural review of every plan. Where on, the, basically if they meet building code and they meet our zoning ordinance in downtown, then they can move forward.
But Matt is correct, the, the, the individuals made this look the way it looks.
Damit did a lot of that, let's just say his name.
Correct. He did, and he utilizes tax credits for a lot of his projects. So that goes to kind of the state Historic Preservation Commission. So they're doing design review. It all boils down to most of these communities that you see, like Savannah, they have some sort of individual site specific architectural review committees uh, that are reviewing each, basically each project on its own merit. And so it's not just a set of policies that is blanket across the board. They've actually got a group of individuals typically in construction, architecture and that sort of stuff that are reviewing each plan, each design plan and making recommendations. Um, just Savannah does, they do it through their HPC, their Historic Preservation Commission, but other communities sometimes do it just through architectural review committees, so.
It's like downtown, who starts? I, I, yeah, I guess, here's my thing Rory. Right now, I really don't know what you want. I think maybe you don't know what you want. Maybe just get with Erica and Chuck. I'm not opposed to y'all three sitting together and drawing up something to come back and present to us. Because right now, I really, I mean, I think initially when you walked in here, you didn't want chains and then you're thinking, well, I kind of like Peter Pit, I'm glad they're there. I imagine you probably feel that way. You'd rather them be there than just be an empty building.
But I'd rather there be something in buildings, yes, but from a proportionate sort of standpoint, I would love to see, um, locally owned businesses be, be in those spaces.
Well, chains would still be a locally owned business.
I'd see pit monkeys in every house, but that ain't going to happen.
Yeah, and I, and I'd rather, I'd rather see something that's a small business.
I would have rather seen food trucks only being used by locally business, but you decided you wanted people from out of town to have food trucks, I mean.
But those wouldn't be in our historic downtown.
I would rather be, there be no poverty.
I don't think you're going to get, I'm just telling you what to do. I don't think, I think you're going to lose, I don't even think you're going to get on the agenda. I don't see a second on here right now because I don't know what you want, unless Jim does.
Hell, I'll say.
We're slowly turning to an autocracy too.
No, but are y'all okay with a Starbucks in five years downtown?
Yeah.
If it runs out of business, the other place, that's all right?
I'll still go to the other place.
No.
I was on the Starbucks down there.
It's a good discussion to have. I'm glad Rory brought it up.
Uh, you already heard what, I mean, my suggestion, if, if y'all go get something that's more, I, I don't understand what y'all want yet. I don't know if you're in Rory's camp. I think you have three to two of you here. I don't, Jim, you tell us what you want. No chains?
I'm, I actually, I told Rory, he brought it up to me a few weeks ago, that I thought it was a, a good thing for us to look at, a good idea. Um, but then I started thinking about, well, now, hold on, if I owned, if I was Chad or somebody that, that owns a building, owned the square, and I was approached by a big, I keep using Starbucks, I'll keep using Starbucks, and they wanted to pay me twice what my current renter was paying for the spot, I, I might take, take that deal and he might be upset with us if we said, oh no, you can't, you can't do that. So it's just, what, it's the role of government. It's the role of government, where, where, how, how should we stick?
Well, let's look at what the free enterprise has done so far. You haven't seen Starbucks run down to the square yet.
And Starbucks ain't, because we don't have enough people here, these big chains that y'all were talking about coming downtown. I mean, who's going to shop in them? You know, we're not Savannah, we're not Atlanta.
I, I guess what I would like to see, if, if there wasn't support for, um, preventing a McDonald's from popping up on the square. If I, if there wasn't a support for stopping a Taco Bell, if we want to continue just naming names, then being able to limit what, the amount of branding and the amount of signage on that building. Because that, that's what you're going to, that, that's what I would like to see is to maintain the look of the downtown and make, and make sure that that occurs.
We'll make McDonald's go back to their vintage logo and their vintage look from the, from when, what's his name? Roy Crawford, what, what's his name? What was his name is, from when he first invented the place. We'll give it that old retro feel if they want to come down to, um, and then make them serve only vintage food items in there as well that are from their original menu. They have to use all American grade and original products that are only made in America. They can't ship anything out of any other country. I'm just playing, but.
I just, Rory, if you, you need to go down and look at the deeds of who owned those tracts of property. I have because I represent some of them and they've been there a long time and they've invested in it and they're the ones making these improvements. I just don't think we should come in there now all of a sudden and say, this is what you're going to do with your property. Thank you for what you've done. Now we're going to limit what you can do with it. That's my position on it. And if anytime you want to look at who owns the properties, I'll be more than happy to show you. But that's what you're proposing is you're saying to these individuals, thank you for your improvements. Thank you for what you've done, but going against fourth, we're going to restrict you.
Yeah, I think what the direction that it has had, uh, gone in up until this point has been positive. And I appreciate all business owners that have done that, but from a, there's a concern of which way to go now.
A concern from whom? You?
Yeah.
Who else?
Uh, I could, I could poll, but it came from me.
Why would you poll? Leave it alone. I mean, leave this alone, let's move on, for real. Leave that alone.
I think we've had enough discussion.
Leave well enough alone, there's nothing wrong.
Y'all two want to do something, y'all get on the agenda.
Wait till they come and file a, an application to move a Dollar General down here and then let's deal with it. Wasting time.
Ordinance and move forward.
I'm ready to move on, with all due respect.
Yeah.
This is about time.
Okay. Uh, the next item was the complaint tracking and this is something you gentlemen requested that we look at. Sam is here to show, uh, we were able to, uh, right now, there's an icon on the website that says, report a problem. And, uh, it's just one icon and, uh, there's not a tracking number assigned. We already owned a piece of software, uh, that would allow us to have a tracking number. Somebody, uh, did report a problem. Libby, if I, I hate to pick on you without warning you this was coming, but how many reporter problems did we have in the last calendar year?
Was it eight, eight even?
I believe it was upper seventies.
Okay. And I, you know, and just in round numbers, I think about forty percent were, weren't even something we needed to be addressing. A lot of them, we get a lot from Carrollton, Texas. Uh, I don't know why they don't have their own website, but we get a lot of them from Carrollton, Texas. We get a lot that are saying, my trash can's broke and Mike Green, these, these items go to me and they go to Mike Green. Mike is so fast, he'll have that can replaced by eight o'clock that morning. I mean, it'll come through at seven, the can will be replaced by eight. Uh, but what we've asked Sam to do, and he's going to show you here quickly, is that he's basically got different categories. It's a little more elaborate system. Let me tell you what I don't want to do, and this is a little bit like, uh, what Councilman Bird said, please don't poll. What I don't want to do is go, here's a place to report problems, please report more problems to us because we don't need to work. And if everybody's happy, and I think they are, we don't need to generate work for ourselves because there are folks out there that will just dream up problems and will have to deal with them and, and we really don't have the staff to do that. But with that said, we are getting a, a new website. It's supposed to launch this month, I believe the first phase of it. And we would have a better system here that, that Sam's going to show us quickly.
Correct. So the, it would, it would be set up on the new website where there would be a button that's report a problem and that button would point you to our new system and bring you to this form where you can fill in all these fields. Um, you can give a summary of your problem, a description, and then the category is where we would kind of gain some ground, I guess, because when an issue is submitted, depending on the category, it'll be directed straight to the responsible individual and they'll get an email notification and they can look at it. Um, and then when you fill all these out, it just creates a ticket, it's a ticketing system, for lack of a better way to put it. It'll submit a ticket, um, and it'll be sent to the appropriate powers that be to take care of it.
And again, what I see happening is that we, we resolve problems quickly now. Occasionally there'll be a problem, there's no answer to, and I'll go back to traffic. There may be some individual thinks they've got a traffic issue and we've analyzed it and there's nothing more we can do and that, that is rare, but when those come along, that person's probably not going to be happy. And, uh, but I think the majority of the folks are very happy with how quickly we respond and, uh, I've had these go off on my phone, it's six in the morning and me roll over and look and somebody's waterhead was off and we literally got somebody there in thirty minutes, you know? And so I think our response time is really quite good. Again, most of these go to Mike Green. I know a lot of you call me or you call Mike. Again, I'll pick on Councilman Bird, he called about a pothole and what was the other thing?
I can't even remember.
Yeah, the furniture pile at MLK and it was, it was done in an hour.
And I was about to compliment you because I was on my way to work.
Right.
And I hit that pothole Saturday morning and I was like, let me text him and tell him about it because I forgot about it. Then I came home to get something, was that Saturday or Monday?
It was Monday.
Oh, Monday, okay. Came home to get something and no pothole. I was like, oh my God.
And I, and again, Mike does most of that, but we don't resolve stuff in a week. We don't resolve stuff in two days.
You know what that is? Pothole is that I just now got them writing down.
It's usually, you know, an hour or two, so.
It was awesome.
But I think the goal on this was a, was a ticket number and, and maybe it directed directly to the department. So I think we've got that, I want to commend Sam, and it didn't cost a dime except for his time. And we don't pay him a whole lot, so it really didn't cost a lot.
Rory, is that what you were envisioning?
Yep, I wait for somebody to put a, uh, report a problem, get a number and then say, if they didn't get a call back, which it sounds like that typically is never the case, but if, if that, uh, did arise, they could say, hey, I got this ticket number and reference, and that way they knew whether or not it was resolved.
I'll tell you, the ones that won't get a call back are the ones that, again, I mean, we even respond to the ones that are out of state and will go, I think you, I mean, I think you need to call Carrollton, Texas, that kind of thing. But sometimes they don't give a, they don't give an email address. It'll come in on burst something, but they don't give an email address and they don't give a phone number. And so if you ever hear, well, they didn't call me back, it's because there was no way to figure out who it was. So, but I, I mean, I would say that is very rare, so, um, anyway, but thank you, Sam.
And we're not asking the sweet little ladies who call us, Tim, to not call up here, to not call one of them.
No, I think that goes a long way for y'all. I think it goes a long way for us. We're still a small enough town to have that kind of personal attention, so.
I don't know if I get to speak because I'm a site bystander, but we actually had a problem and we didn't have a ticket. We didn't lug it in here because I didn't know that that was a thing, but we have not received a call.
Okay, I'll be glad to address that personally. I'll give you my card and if you'll call me in the morning, I'll be glad to address that personally.
We can talk about it tonight if we want. It's actually the conversations that go back and forth. Nobody wants to loan up to it, whatever else we call.
I promise you I'll resolve it. This, this is a work session, it's not something for public participation. I promise you I'll resolve it myself, so, whatever it is.
I think we were supposed to be getting a call from you today.
Okay, well, you'll call to me tomorrow, I can assure you of that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So what I like about this too is, I think this is what I said before, probably the only thing I like about it is data collection. Will we, Sam, will, will there be data collected based on the complaints that come in so we can look at hotspots and we can look at areas that we need to improve upon as a city?
So there are minor data collection capabilities built into it. Um, and to the extent of how you would choose to utilize that, if it will pull, that would be kind of up to the, the powers that be above me. Um, but it will keep track of these fields that we have here and it will keep a record of these fields when things are submitted, so.
But we can't like draft a map from this that shows hot, like Joel has some technology where he could show me like where most certain kinds of crimes are committed in the city were a hotspot, so.
That would have to be something we'd look into. It, it could be a possibility, I just don't know at the moment.
I think that could be helpful. You said it could?
So if we have an Excel sheet that gives a list of all the addressing, we can put it into GIs, we can do hotspot.
You are so smart, thank you. Wow.
Awesome, good work.
All right. Wes Carroll from Projects, uh, just to give a little background.
His legs were asleep.
Peter's so glad to finally get to speak, he's, he's about chug death over there. Uh, we put as a wag a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for, uh, Councilman Bird and Wes Carroll from Projects. When we got into the detail to do those, that was not enough money. And, uh, we've got the Optimus Park Restaurant done, we've got all that work done at Legends West and that leaves the work at, uh, the community center over there and the entrances at Fourth and Alabama. Peter, if you'd speak with this.
Yeah, the first time that we, uh, did the CHL Center back in the nineteen sixties when it was built and then the next time we did any renovations, basically all that building was back in two thousand and two. And Councilman Bird approached him and asked if there was something we could do to upgrade the facility a little bit, give it a, uh, a fresh coat of paint, some new flooring, things of that nature. And then we also have the Fourth and Alabama Street Park, it's going to be right there on the corner as well. And as Tim was saying, the restrooms at Optimus are pretty much what, seventy-five, eighty percent done?
Uh, probably more than that, probably in the nineties, yeah.
Pretty much that's been completed. Legends West is completed. We've also done all the upgrades. We've had some money that's been given to us by the county as well and to add some special features to it. And as Tim just said, we do have a hundred thousand dollars, but the grand total is two thirty-two minus that hundred. We still have to come up with a hundred and thirty-two thousand to do some of these upgrades that Councilman Bird is asking for the center now. Captain Hart, a hundred percent.
So the bottom line is we, we need to put this on the agenda and you vote on it if you want to amend the budget to fund that. Um, and I know Councilman Bird will sponsor it, they'll need another of you to sponsor either that or the mayor.
May I say something to the Captain Hart, allowing the thing?
Yes, sir.
I think the, the public's, and it may not be anybody in this room, but maybe you haven't heard it at all, but I think the, uh, public's perception may be that things are broken in the Captain Hart and Lamerson. It is basically indestructible.
It is spotless.
Yeah, it came so clean.
Oh, it's spotless.
They're like glass and that, everything is in place. The only thing is, it's old and worn out. Like you can see where people have walked on the floors, on the tile floors, those linoleum floors, it's worn down. And the bathroom floors, I don't know what that material is, Peter.
I don't either, I mean, it's a.
They walk on those floors so much that you can literally see a path go over there. So it just needs some facade updates and.
It gets a lot of usage.
Lot of love. And it's not broken, nothing in there is broken.
Well, who's the gentleman that manages that?
Martivas Boykin is the custodial staff and Bradley Lester is the one who oversees.
It is just spotless. I, I'm stunned at how well maintained that place is.
But the fabrics, you know, they've sat in chairs like this for a long time.
I'm not saying it's not worn, I'm just saying that they really do a great job.
Nothing's real, nothing's torn, nothing's broken, there's no vandalism, it is.
And how old were those pool tables?
They've been there a while.
Since we were five.
Since we, yeah.
Was it like thirty or forty years, is that right?
We recovered and recovered and recovered.
But I know you, I know you've maintained them and they're real high quality, but I just wanted to commend the folks.
Forty.
Can we sell those pool tables? Can we? Can we?
We can probably post one or two in the senior center, I think. They use them. I mean, we can, we can see. Sure, of course.
Anyway, you, if, if Councilman Bird can get another sponsor, you'll see that on a date near agenda.
It's awesome to get those spaces upgraded. How do those, how do those bathrooms compare to like Safari Park or Castle Playground or those bathrooms?
The park bathrooms are a little bit different from our center bathrooms. I mean, they're just a, they're a nicer quality in our centers than in parks. You know, the ones in the parks are pretty, they're basic, concrete blocks.
The Optimus Park one?
No, the one at Optimus Park, they're, it's the same, but Councilman Bird designed the outside of that. And it's actually very pretty. It looks similar to the one at Hageable. Or Tim will sponsor.
Okay. We've got one more item to get, something Rory called me about this week, so it didn't get on the agenda before it went out. But he asked about doing something for the farmer's market, some kind of pavilion. And he asked about doing it in, uh, the parking lot for Smith Brothers, basically, which is a city parking lot. Now, I'll tell you, when we do the stormwater that's affecting the Methodist church, that will, the final phase of that will work down to this parking lot. This parking lot will need some work at that point. And so that might be the time to do what he's talking about. Uh, he asked me today about looking at, I'm just gonna call it a shed or a pavilion, the one out at, uh, the brewery, what is that called? Prender's Ale. I rode out there and looked at it. Uh, it's basically just a pole barn, it's a metal roof, wooden poles, um, and it looks good. I built something similar on my shop at home, and mine was twenty-four by sixty-two, and it was fifty-three hundred dollars, not thousand, hundred dollars. So I think you're talking about something here for not all of that, but a basic pavilion, you know, maybe in the ten thousand dollar range. This is real, I mean, we've not done any work on this, we don't know how big it is. Uh, he just asked if we bring it up, and if we're not ready to present you something to vote on. It's just at some point.
Is that our parking lot?
Yes, sir.
And Rory, I'll co-sponsor that. And now, will this serve dual purpose? Like, will people, because I'm stressed with the public, so I want to know, like, during the week, can they still park right there?
Well, this one, you could, this is so preliminary, I, you know, we just, again, he, he asked if we'd talk about it tonight. We put it up here. I don't have a lot of detail for you, other than to say, the pavilion itself will not be a lot of money. Now redoing that parking lot and restriping it will be a lot of money. It will be.
So we own that old parking lot?
But is, is it Tanner proposing to move the farmer's market?
I thought so.
Not anymore. They've been removed from those plans. That pavilion, so they're currently, they don't have a space for them to go. So, uh, the farmer's market is currently on Dixie Street, which is not really then connected to, you, you go there and then you leave. When they were just right next to that, in front of.
Peter's Place.
Yeah, Peter's Place there, just right next to it. You, you could, you'd go and you'd still be there, and people would then.
Watering the restaurant.
Uh, the, I don't know if it was a lease, the agreement with the property owner stopped.
What was that? Well, I didn't hear that.
The, the agreement with the proper, with Peter, uh, I don't know exactly the details of it, but the agreement was no longer there.
What's that red thing at the top? Peter, what was that park called when we were kids? That little bitty wedge of a park right there that had the wisteria vines growing on the arbor? Remember? We were kids, and it had a fountain there?
No. Uh, Smith Park? It's not Smith, is it?
I can't remember. I just know it was a really, that was a popular park when we were kids, right there. Had a fountain there.
Well, I'll say, this is very, 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 very preliminary. Uh, I mean, we, and again, we're having conversations with Tanner about other issues. I will ask them again, you know, if they could put this back in their construction program, we won't even have to deal with it.
I'd love to see it downtown.
I like it downtown.
So what, the discussion was if they did have a space over Tanner, they could do a midweek farmer's market at that location. But really, the every Saturday, all through the year, they'd be able to do it every single Saturday if it was covered. It would be great to be downtown. It just continues what, what the, what's going on there.
How popular is the farmer's market right now?
It's every single Saturday, there's still, lots of farmers going there, and there's lots of customers, yeah. But yeah, I'd like to see them move back, and especially if we can do it cost effectively.
If, if we're just talking about, you know, if we're just talking about a covering, it's not a lot of money. If it turns into, oh, now we want bathrooms, now we want a kitchen, blah, 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 then you're starting to get ridiculous.
We got the public bathrooms right, right up the road.
Right.
Um, there, we've already got, that's what I mean about, as long as we put it next to the amenities we already have, then the cost is minimal. Thank you.
That's all I got. Gentlemen, I just want to say this works very well for staff, this quarterly work session. I just, I think the timing is just right. Once a month is too often for us, and not, but we need them at least once a quarter. So this really works for us with the work we have, so I appreciate you.
Tim, one, one quick little thing. Would you believe that Mike Green's shop used to be right there on that parking lot?[1758.74]